We have a roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Rowena. Muted but present. Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Here.
Mr. Schulman.
Here.
And that is everybody I see on my screen.
Okay. I believe that this, this is Rod Johnson's final meeting. That his, his term is up July 1st. Our next meeting isn't until later in July. So Rod is going to be leaving us. And I, I just wanted to say with everyone here, how much we'll miss his input, how much we have appreciated his input. He's, he's, he's been on the commission as long as I have and then some. So he was here when I came and he was one of the people I learned from when I first came on the commission. So it's an important loss to us. And I'm personally, I'm, I'm sorry that he's leaving. And I, I know many of you feel the same. All right. Our first order of business is a public hearing, 2021-09SP Spinnaker Real Estate Partners LLC, Coastal Lofts LLC, 810 and 18 Monroe Street, 2 and 4 Chestnut Street, 75 and 77 South Main Street, proposed multi-building mixed-use project. For the public that may be listening in or, and/or may wish to participate, let me explain the process. First, the developer will give a presentation regarding the project during that time, if commission members or staff have questions, they're free to ask those questions. When that presentation is done, I have indicated to our reviewer that he can have two minutes to explain the process he's taken in approaching this particular review. But rather than having him give a complete review, which is online and has been available to both the commission members and the public, I will invite the commission members to ask him any questions they have about his review. Once that's been completed, it will be opened up to the public. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak, we will explain how, how to raise your hand so that you can have an opportunity to speak. Typically, we do not limit how long you can speak. We ask only that you do it in a polite manner, that you identify yourself and your home address. And then you're free to express your feelings about the project and ask any questions that you wish. When all of the members of the public who wish to speak have spoken, the developer will have an opportunity to respond to those questions. Again, if commission members have questions or comments, they'll have a full opportunity to ask those during that time. Once that is completed, unless there's some exceptional reason, we will close the hearing. And we will review and possibly take action on the application a little bit later in the meeting. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the representative of the developer to begin the presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me one moment. I need to recuse myself from this meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chairman and Steve, I think we concluded our presentation on June 3rd and happy to kind of run through it again. Steve, I'm not sure how you want it to go. But maybe it's up to you guys.
I'd say probably since it's been a couple of weeks, if you just maybe provide an overview and then any kind of, I know there were some new materials that you had distributed to us that we passed on to the commission. Maybe just highlight that and then we can go from there. I know the public didn't really weigh in much last time. Maybe there's somebody here that wanted to speak to that.
Sure. So for the record, Matt Everton with Spinnaker Realty Partners, representing the applicant. We are under contract to acquire seven parcels, including seven structures generally bound by South Main, Monroe and Chestnut Streets in South North Connecticut. It's just under one and a half acres. And the proposal, which I believe Colin from Beinfield can give us a brief overview of the actual architectural and design elements. The proposal is for 150 apartment units, approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space, office, residential, retail and restaurant, and associated parking and public realm space in actually three buildings, two buildings that would be retained, existing buildings that would be renovated, one substantially and the other more of a facade renovation with the existing tenants remaining. And then the third building would be a new construction of a six-story structure with the majority of the density. With that, Colin, you want to take us through?
Yeah, I've got a more streamlined proposal that we gave the other night to the redevelopment agency and they, they did. We found out today from Steve Kleppen that they did approve that unanimously. So that was, that was a nice, nice thing to hear. Colin Growth here for Beinfield Architecture. Brian, do I have the ability to screen share? Yes, okay, thank you. Excellent. Okay, Brian, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, wonderful. I got the same problem I had the other night where my little Zoom window is blocking my notes. Never enough monitor space, right, everybody? Thank you, commissioners and staff. We're looking forward to recapping this major proposal for the northern end of the, the block of Monroe, Chestnut and South Main, brought to you by the consultants and the entities on the, on the screen. The subject parcel, as, as we noted, is located here at the north end of the block, directly across from the South Norwalk train station, or sorry, the police station and very adjacent to the South Norwalk train station. 500-foot radius gets you to some public parks, extended state hotel, eateries, mass transit, educational, almost to the educational institution of Columbus Magnet School, side-by-side charter school there, some religious institutions. So many amenities within a very short distance. Downtown neighborhood is about 1,000 feet, as is the riverfront. So good adjacency is there for walking. The site's highlighted here, this is a view from the north. Number eight Monroe is one of the structures that's going to be maintained. That's the one that has the existing businesses and tenants in it, looking to, you know, clean up the sidewalk, make some improvements there in conjunction with this project, clean up the existing storefronts and the building, so the masonry would be cleaned. Part of the plaza, which I'll discuss in a minute, potential openings in the side of the building and some additional structures for the use of the tenants. And maintain, most importantly, maintaining those local business, locally owned businesses and the owners of those businesses and their employees in that location as part of this project. Number 18 Monroe, we're, have that in front of the local historic commission to be hopefully listed on the local historic register, looking to preserve the structure and renovate it to be ground floor retail and two stories of office space, small tenant office space in that building and clean it up. And really, we've submitted drawings that show generally at this point what the concept is. So to remove many of the appurtenances, really clean it up, restore the, the windows to something more appropriate and bring the building up, back up to a much more serviceable stat, status for, for tenants and for, for businesses that would locate there. We've been asked if this, by some comments that were forwarded to us, if the, the plan fits with the plan of conservation and development, the P O C D. So we, the short answer is yes, we feel it does. It upholds many of the tenants. The groundwork for compliance is qualified nicely in the executive summary. And later on, there's further discussion about how Norwalk is fortunate enough to have several commuter rail connections and current research showing that the future development and redevelopment is most likely to occur in dynamic walkable neighborhoods that surround these assets. This is the future development that was seen in filling in this neighborhood by the P O C D. Most recently, Connecticut has been in the news as another Fortune 500 company is moving to Southwest Connecticut from New York City, bringing about 200 jobs to the area and increasing our share of Fortune 500 companies from 14 to 15. This was reported by the Stanford Advocate in the past few days. It's highly likely that this move is being driven by recent development trends in lower Fairfield County and increasing access to desirable urban amenities, diverse housing options, access to the outdoors, proximity to water and high-quality education, among the reasons that they're most likely trying to locate here. In the executive summary, it notes in particular that the city needs to continue land, land use policies that promote growth in areas where there is transit, city services and infrastructure, employment opportunities, access to goods and services and activities that allow Norwalk to become an 18-hour city. South Norwalk and the Sono Station Design District in particular have all of these. It's, it goes on to say, "It's all about placemaking, livability and the new urban economy." "This development team has brought forth some of the most successful, successful urban spaces in the region and we view this as another opportunity to provide a positive focal point for a neighborhood that helps it rise higher." It also says that Norwalk is a mature community with little undeveloped land. Transit-oriented development districts in South Norwalk, East Norwalk and Merritt 7, as well as the development of the West Avenue and Wall Street Quarter, will provide walkable neighborhoods. This is an infill project that reuses existing land and rather than taking open space, well-giving back a high-quality urban amenity. Workforce housing is always a concern. This project is going to add to the total number of available workforce units by providing 15 new units dispersed throughout the new building of the same quality level as the market rate units, which will be provided, and the market rate units are provided at various sizes and price points, which naturally widens the available options to different income strata without subsidies. The walk score for this neighborhood, being a transit-oriented neighborhood in the downtown, is particularly high, 88 and 54 has good, good transit adjacency. So just showing that there's lots of stuff to get to in this neighborhood and you don't have to use your vehicle to get there, which cuts down on traffic and lets you get more things outside of your door and live car light or, or car free. The site is also well-positioned to be adjacent to the city's expanding bicycle routes. It's connected to two major waterfront parks by on-street bicycle facilities. The East Coast Greenway, which is a national route that runs from Florida to Maine, is less than 1,000 feet from the eastern side of the site and the regional Norwalk River Valley Trail, which is completing two additional phases this year, will eventually run 30 miles from Norwalk to Danbury, passing through Wilton Ridgefield and Redding. So very good proximity to outdoor recreation in those ways and also alternative transportation means to get to our public amenities. Our vision for the courtyard and the north elevation of this project is focused on a strong composition that was inspired loosely by the Moxie Hotel in Chelsea, in the Chelsea neighborhood of New York City. There's a central steel and glass exoskeleton that's flanked by two sisters that invert that concept and become more solid with larger corten steel cladding panels. And still amazing that they have oversized windows that let a lot of natural light in, even though it looks substantially more solid than the central portion. The height differential of the existing number eight, number 18 buildings that are to remain, the number eight is a single story, whereas number eight, 18 is three stories. And the, the courtyard frontage is about four stories. Of the new building is being mitigated by these two shade pavilions that can be used by the retail and restaurant tenants on either side of the courtyard and allow ambient contextual lighting to be suspended in key areas, activity at the sides of the plaza. There are these tree bostes on either side that provide tree canopy and keep a clean urban aesthetic with limbed up branches, leaving solitary trunks that meet the plaza and turf surrounds. Provides good visibility and conjures feelings of openness and safety as it helps the sides of the plaza feel more like an outdoor room where more intimate activities like outdoor dining or seating can occur. The central steel armature in this area provides a gathering place in a virtual porco share for Uber and Lyft drop-off when not in use for other activities. The grasses that line that along the sidewalk offer a visual edge and a subtle screen for the inhabitants of the plaza, providing some sense of containment and some visual interest in screening of the street while you're inside the plaza without completely obstructing the outward views. There's been some questions about the shared space and the nature of the drive-through. We reference Iron Works a lot because it's been a very successful space locally, but we believe that providing these shared spaces where vehicles are allowed, but not the main focus. It can extend the longevity, safety and usefulness of the space and also helps to keep it active throughout the day and throughout the year. There's two examples here, which many of you probably know from attending the restaurants there or going to some of the other businesses in Iron Works. The vehicular circulation is provided, but on a hot day, children can play in the fountain. And in the evening, it can convert to a more intimate dining experience as it's a little bit more car-free. The image in the lower right is a similar concept that we recently got approved in Darien for as part of the Corbin District, which is a redevelopment of the, the west side of the Darien downtown. And this is a public plaza that is adjacent to an internal circulation road or Woonerf Shared Street that is effectively extending the plaza into the vehicle area and allowing people and vehicles to coexist. So our proposal very similarly has flush curbs and varied ground materials that slow the vehicles down and provide a people-first mentality while promoting slower speeds when vehicles enter the space. So that's the, the high-level concept there.
On that round, the drive-through there, have folks complained at all at Iron Works of exhaust from sitting outside or anything like that? That you're aware of?
I don't have that answer. Matt might be able to speak to that.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but like Colin said, in the evenings, that courtyard is, is restricted to pedestrian and dining only. And the cars don't circulate in the evening.
And then in this project, is the courtyard going to be blocked off? Well, it's not going to be evening restricted. Will it be evening restricted or?
Yeah, it's designed, based on the uses that flank it, it's designed to be flexible and we do have retractable bolters to restrict access.
Gotcha. So, so notionally, when most people are going to be sitting, will, won't be, cars won't be sitting there idling, exhaust going into their tables, et cetera.
Yep. So then this is a view of the South Main vocabulary and elevation. This continues the merchant tile aesthetic that occurs closer to the railroad bridge. We've set the front doors back considerably in response to city comments and some of the concerns the T M P had about the doors opening and obstructing the pedestrian passage. So we've recessed those that give some visual interest to the facade as well as keeps the doors clear of the, the pedestrian, the main pedestrian walkway on the sidewalk. So that helps to enlarge the pedestrian realm and make it more comfortable for people that are walking down South Main Street. The sidewalk also continues in this area across the garage entry and we've moved the ramping that needs to occur to get up to the garage level to a curb extension. And that again helps to provide a higher quality pedestrian environment as it's not going to start pitching as you're crossing the vehicle, garage entry and also allows the sidewalk to be continuous. And that provides a visual cue to the people exiting the garage and vehicles that it's a pedestrian environment, you need to slow down and, and really be aware of, of that crossing. We did, there was this, the southern facade was mentioned in the report, providing green screen in that area. Regardless of the openings that, that Bob mentioned for ventilation, the green screens would likely remain on the exterior of the wall if the opening is removed. And that would provide some visual interest and treatment to that facade since it is a zero lot line, there's not a lot we can do there. But we'll, we'll work to provide something that's aesthetically pleasing while planning for future development in the neighborhood, should that occur. The South, the Chestnut Street elevation, which is the western elevation, is seen as being kind of a counterpoint to the One Chestnut Street project that's being developed by Spinnaker Partners currently, which is much more of a, a brick factory aesthetic. This is seen as more of a floating fiber cement volume over the street level, two-story amenity space that's treated much more similarly to the, the central volume of the, the plaza elevation. So that's this, this image down at the bottom here. It's being seen as what's continuing along the street and providing a very open and thin feeling space that's going to contrast the, the two-volume brick mill aesthetic going on across the street. And we see these two projects kind of having synergies between them where people will be able to go across the street and patronize one project or the other. And that will hopefully create some, some positive activity in the street and some movement throughout the neighborhood. We've also accommodated for the vehicular entry and some ventilation that's needed for the garage up here and the bike rooms located at the southwest portion of, of the facade. In closing, this aerial rendering shows the project. It kind of relates to the neighborhood and you can see the focal courtyard here on the north side of the property. We've got the two pergola structures and the central armature that's the gathering point for the project. You can see the, the screening and the bostes trees, renovated awnings and storefronts along there. I worked with the city to reduce the amount of obstructions and position the street, city standard streetlights as, as made sense for this project. A lot of the street lighting got moved to the building, building-mounted lights as requested by the city. Consultants can speak a little bit more to that. But overall, it relates to its neighbors, provides an upgraded streetscape and, and a much-needed public open space that will hopefully be as active, excuse me, as Iron Works. And we really hope it becomes a new economic engine for this neighborhood and drives the neighborhood in an upward direction. Thank you. That's, that's the end of my presentation. We have the consultants available and I have, I believe, everybody's documents in the, in the, the presentation, should we need to reference them.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Gail.
One question I had is the consultant, our consultant, raised an issue about the ventilation in the garage and whether or not the ventilation was sufficient, that you might need extra units or additional units to provide ventilation. Do you, can you speak to that?
It's a little early to have a mechanical engineer on the job for that, but generally, we should have sufficient, sufficient space for intake through the, the garage openings, provided they're, they're of an open nature. We also have the space that's provided on the, the south facade behind the green screens that would be available for, for intake into the garage without compromising the, the other elevations. So there is sufficient space on the exterior, in particular, the, the area above the, this area here where the garage entry is. And there's a parking mezzanine beyond, so you, you would be able to have intake louvers that are screened from the public in this area or, or some exhaust. And then also in the Chestnut Street, these two areas here are seen as, as louvers and could be part of the mechanical exhaust system. So as I said, it's a little early to have all that dialed in at this point, but generally, we're confident that there's enough space in square footage on the facade to provide that ventilation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add why, excuse me, why that was brought up was just two things. One, that if there was any visible mechanical equipment that would go with a mechanical ventilation system, which this garage would require, that would need to be approved either now or in some subsequent way, but it, it's not shown on the drawings right now. And then the other was if in designing that system, it took either vertical ducts or horizontal ducts took out some of the functional things that this, the approval is based on. For example, if you had, had to have a vertical duct that took out parking spaces, you would want to know that right now.
Bob, while we have you on, you, you were going to give that two-minute presentation. Why don't, why don't you do that now?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I wanted to, to to mention here is this report is a iteration beyond the reports that you've gotten before and tried to make a little clearer how we're approaching the review of this. As, as we say in the, at the beginning and at the end, this is a good project. It meets all the basic goals that a project should have in this neighborhood and we recommend its approval. That's not to say that it meets every requirement of the design guidelines. And so what we tried to do in this is distinguish between those parts of the design guidelines that couldn't be met because of particularities of this site and those that could be met but haven't been met. That may be less than two minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Bob, I have a question. I know you were concerned about the setback of the building and that front space in front of the building. My sense is that, that, that space offers the opportunity to activate Monroe Street in a way that a building that's pulled further forward doesn't. And so I was wondering why you felt so strongly about that?
Well, what I felt strongly about was that if you read closely both the zoning and the guidelines, it seems to be contrary to both. I, I tried to make us, make our statement clear that we thought it was a worthwhile space, but that it was worth the commission actually actively discussing and, and stating not just, "We like it," but why do we like it? Why do we think it's appropriate? So that's, that's another level of thing. There are some things in here that we're recommending are good, but are, are contrary to one or either zoning or guidelines. But the commission, I would encourage you to do just what you did. Ask a question, say why you, why you think it's good. Discuss it with the other commission members. I would point out one thing, because we did come out saying we didn't think that the drop-through was, was inappropriate or consistent with the guidelines element. And every time that I have heard the applicant's team discuss this, they put it in the context of Iron Works. I would just have you consider that the center of the Iron Works space, which shows up very favorably in those photographs, is a fountain. The center of this proposed plaza is an idling delivery truck. I think that's a big difference.
Okay, thank you. Now, Matthew, I did have a question regarding that very issue. You have spoken about Ubers and so forth. You haven't really, however, spoken about the world in which we live where deliveries by trucks are far more frequent than, than they used to be. And I'm wondering if you know how the front desk of this facility How the front desk of this facility is going to operate. When it comes to the delivery of packages. Is there a program in place to move those quickly so that any vehicles? That may pull up or idle there can be moved out quickly?
Sure, so we haven't designed the interior amenity space, haven't laid it out, but typically we have a separate mailroom, separate package room and all the different. Delivery services have access to that, so they don't even have to check in with anybody, they have access to the building, key fobs, access to the package room, so they go right in there. You either drop it in the package room or if it's the post office, drop it in the mailbox.
Okay, thank you.
Propered in another entrance or do they have to come through that?
So it's probably got to be a combination, we do have a separate loading area off of Chestnut Street. We envision that mainly for move in and move outs of residents, but it probably could be used for for deliveries as well if needed.
You could manage to make that happen, that deliveries go to another space, you know, deliveries of like Amazon and.
Yeah, it's tough to control everyone out there that's just delivering these days, but we can, we can try to guide them to the to that location, but. I can't promise you that no one's going to pull up into this this drop off area and run in.
Right, but the drivers get used to where they go at various buildings, you know, most of them will probably come to where you direct.
Mister Schulman, I can also, I think it's important to add that one of the other. Things that was brought up both by our internal traffic consultant and by the the T M P department and their memo had to do with the obstruction and the. Impacting of the the traffic flow on Monroe Street and one of the things that. Was key there was they they very much, both of them very much liked the idea that a lot of this standing and. Stuff could happen outside of Monroe Street as it's currently designed. And this gets those activities, pick up some drop offs and. Loading and unloading, you know, that's very short term related out of that traffic flow, even it it at a key times if it were open, that's probably. A transitional time, but that was a very important point that T M P and our internal consultant brought up.
Are there other questions for? For Bob or other other questions for the developer?
Can you say more, one of the pieces that you called out is the turf and the use of the turf. Versus natural grass, can you say a little more about that?
Well, the the I assume you're talking, asking me, yes, the the proposal is to have AstroTurf or artificial grass. In the inset squares surrounding each of the Bosc trees that are in the in the courtyard, given. All of the implications of the guidelines of how nature is important as a counterpoint to this built environment. I don't see it, I'm sorry. Now, anything else would probably be fine, I mean, real grass would be fine, tree grates would be fine.
Yeah, we're happy to save it for rebuttal, but I I think if we put real grass. Given the the intensity of use that we hope it's in the courtyard, including as we find out. You know, that there's a lot of pets in these buildings and it's tough to kind of keep that grass from from drying out, brownin' out. So this isn't a cost cutting maneuver, this artificial turf turf is going to be probably five to 10 times, you know, sod if not more.
So so let me ask you a question then, when the pets use artificial turf, what happens?
There's the specific turf that gets washed out and it's a maintenance item, but it doesn't, obviously it doesn't brown out the grass and kill it.
Can you explain why you feel that that is more appropriate, for example, than. An attractive attractive tree grates?
It's just it's just softer, the alternative is is just a hundred percent hardscape, so going back to the Ironworth Courtyard. And Eric Rains is is on this and you can talk to it better, but if you've been in that courtyard, all that, you know, green. Grass is actually turf and it's it's lasted at this point since. Two thousand, what was it, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen?
There's a, there's a couple of points that have come up, this is Eric Rains. One is the the durability of of natural turf and if you think of how athletic fields have to be rotated in their use so that they recover from use. In order for the grass to remain healthy, that's in that those situations. There is no recovery time for if we tried to use natural turf in this situation, so it would be in constant use. Which means that it would be reduced down to open soil areas. That, you know, that wouldn't grow anything. And the the gravel that we're able to put underneath the artificial turf helps with the compaction issue. That would exist if we didn't have, if we use, if we, again, if we tried to use natural turf on the roots of the trees. A tree grate, it creates additional issues aside from general maintenance. In that, in that the the tree grates as the trees mature. Oftentimes wind up inhibiting the growth of the tree and conflicting with the need for the roots to reach out to the to the distance that they do. So what the the it wanted the advantage, one of the advantages of using the system we're proposing. Is it allows the root systems to grow and and as they would in nature. And find their way through the underlying, through through the the surface that's under underneath the artificial turf. Without cutting off water and even oxygen down to the roots, so. So the turf is, it certainly is an artificial product, but it 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 promotes the growth of the trees in a way. That the other elements that have been mentioned would not.
Steve, do we have the ability to treat? Artificial turf in the same way as we would treat natural, natural grass or a tree? And what I mean by that is if a tree in a project dies, the the owner is responsible for replacing it. And I'm wondering if artificial turf is used, if it becomes unattractive, if it becomes too soiled. Could we have the right to insist that it be replaced as well?
Yeah, I think that you just want to make sure that you have a condition that, you know, speaks to the. Site site aesthetic and the site amenities that they're kept in good order and that way, you know, you could. We could always point back and say this was a condition of approval, you're now in violation of that condition and take an enforcement action.
Okay, I mean, my guess is that any developer is going to want to keep that area attractive. But this would simply be an additional protection. In that, in that area. We've received a number of letters. From current tenants. In. The the building supporting. This application, can you explain to us how you're accommodating? The existing tenants and clearly they're going to need to be moved out in order to. Permit your construction.
Sure, so we we haven't touched base with everyone, we touched base with a few of the residents whose leases are coming up. And and assuming we get approved and we know this project moves forward, we'll we'll reach out to the rest. But the two instances I think you're referring to that we have, I think there was residential tenants sent letters, one at two Chestnut Street. He actually qualified for a low market rate unit at at one Chestnut Street, which is currently under construction. And he submitted an application, so he most likely is moving across the street. And another tenant at four Chestnut. Was was advised based on the lease expiration that we couldn't, that the current landlord, based on our contract, they couldn't extend it. And they found a new apartment on their own, but they actually needed a little bit of help on the security deposit, and so a combination of Spinnaker and the current landlord. There helped out with that.
And. What are the, what are the current rents that the existing residents are paying compared to? The workforce housing rents that you anticipate?
Yeah, so it it ranges, there's a different levels of finishes and 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 renovations, there's. For instance, seventy five South Main was recently renovated in the last five years and their rents are comparable to the market rate rents that we're going to be seeing. In these new developments, two Chestnut, that current rent does approximate the the work per thousand rent.
Okay, thank you.
His his rent won't change much, but his quality of life, you know, the level of finishes and modern finishes and appliances and stuff.
I I just want to jump in here, Bob, I thought that your thoughts on. The historic structures that are involved in this application and looking specifically. Apparently page forty through forty two of your document. Bob, I kind of want to get your thoughts because it said that that the app that at this point, that for an application like this, that Spinnaker's. Description of what it wants to do with the historic structures lacks specific, but then it's not unusual for this type of, you know, at this stage of the game. But I do want to get some thoughts from you and Matthew, I'd like to get your thoughts as well. What are you planning to do with these structures and and I want to sort of say this in the frame of. You know, there are a lot of people who have lived in this community for a long time and these are important buildings and important parts of this community. And I want to get a sense, since it's a public hearing, this is the community is watching and listening. You know, what your thoughts are to, you know, with these historic spaces.
And who starts, Mister Chairman? Okay, all right, so at 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 this stage, what they have submitted, what the applicant has submitted is an appropriate level of information. Because it takes going fully through construction documents and and being in contact with somebody who is going to be. Reviewing the the exterior work and I want to emphasize, talking about the exterior work to make sure. That it meets the Secretary of Interior standards, I'll I'll give you an example. The, there was one of the elements that is being talked about being done is the. Replacement of the windows with more appropriate. With more historically appropriate windows. That could be a lot of different things and having the right. Profile of of a jam, a head, a sill, having the right width, having the muttons, having the right pattern. What is that pattern, what was the historic pattern, if what's there is not original, it's going to be very important. Even more important on the storefront. Storefront in a generic sense, when you're talking about, say, the new building. Storefront is an aluminum aluminum mullion that's two and a quarter, two and a half inches wide, four, five, five and a half inches deep. And. And is appropriate. For the new construction would not be appropriate as storefront for the historic storefronts. So that's the sort of information that has to be developed, has to be researched, has to be developed. And is more than you would expect at this point in the project and is something that needs somebody who is very conversant. With the Secretary of Interior standards to review and hopefully in the process, help the applicant's team come up with the right solution.
Matthew?
Yeah, so I agree with with most of what Bob said, it does need a lot more work, a lot, a lot more detailing. We have engaged with a local historic consultant who's done some work with us, including across the street at eleven Chestnut Street, if you've driven down recently, the old. Leary Fert Factory Building was renovated, same same architect. And we did go through the historic tax credit process there, so we did run it through SHPO and the and the Park Service. And other examples of of kind of renovations that this design team has has done includes the Corset Factory on Anne Street and the Lock Building on Marshall Street. So, you know, that's just some some background, but agreed, needs a little bit more detailing, but Bob's right, it's not, you know, it would have taken a lot of work and it's not necessarily something. We usually spend that much time before approval.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just have one more, Matthew, I know the last time, the last hearing we had on the subject. You had said you were going to go back and work on community relations, how you were going to engage with the community throughout this process, you were going to. Sort of get back to us on what you've done, what your plan is, and engaging, you know, local community groups, you know, throughout this process, can you just speak to sort of what you, what has happened?
We did follow back up with with the the neighbors across, you know, that are in this project and you saw some of the feedback from them. And did send an email following back up with a local council member that we previously met with. Haven't, that was last, haven't heard back and then also met with or sent an email and tried to connect via LinkedIn. From the, I think, Fair Housing or Fair Rent Commission and and have have yet to to hear back, but I'll happily follow up and make sure that. Specifically with Sonia, but also with Darlene that our relocation efforts are satisfactory.
Any other questions before we open this up to the public?
Remind me, there were a lot, Bob had a lot of like design comments in in his in his memo, is the plan, like, does the. The applicant respond to all of them, is it's open to, that they're just going to respond to what they feel they need to respond, I forget. Just from a process standpoint, I know different applicants have done different things with the design memo, but. There's a lot in there and I wanted to make sure like either staff is okay with the what things that are addressed or not addressed or how do we want to just make sure we don't bypass a lot of what's in there.
Steve?
So, yeah, so I think the. The chairman had indicated that if you had specific questions for Bob, I mean, referring to the points that he raised in there, it'd be good to to get those now. Staff had some rebuttal comments to a few of the items in there and then. In the resolution with the draft conditions, we did offer up comments and. Add some of the items that that Bob had included in there and I think they listed those out in there specifically on a lot of the detailing items that he mentioned. You know, about the mullions and the the the. This, the brickwork and those kind of things that were relevant, I I did forward that to the applicant, I didn't, they didn't. Call yelling at me, so I'm assuming that they're okay with those changes, otherwise this is their opportunity to, you know, reply to that at this juncture.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we'll have an opportunity after the public. Comments and rebuttal to ask other questions. With that, Brian, can I ask you to explain to the public? How they can raise their hand and be recognized?
Sure, so for anyone from the public who would like to speak. On this application, you can use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen, if you're hovering over everybody's faces, you just click on that. If you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine and that will raise your hand. And then I can bring you over to speak and then if you want to show up on camera, I can make that happen, so you just need to let me know. And then just reminder to say your your name and address on the record for us. And to unmute yourself, you hit star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, for the record, my name is Diane Loricella. Twenty one Blue Mountain Ridge Road in Norwalk, I've been a thirty six year member of Norwalk, I've lived all over Norwalk. And I'm speaking as a citizen tonight, I just, first of all, wanted to say that I know this is a very, very creative assembly of parcels. I I know that it took lots of planning and has taken a lot of planning to to do this. I just had some suggestions to make this a more, kind of a more livable, sustainable development. I am unfortunately near Washington Street right now, so I'm sorry if there's some interference and the noise, but anyway. First of all, I wanted, of course, to. Ask the commission to, of course, take this the special permit. Conditions and standards and carefully go through them to ensure that this particular project, which is. Mixed use project, I am very much in favor of that. I like what I see on South Main Street, however, on Chestnut Street. I and Monroe Street, I wanted to make sure that the scale and bulk of the buildings are commensurate with. are commensurate with, um, not a, not a New York City style, but more of a, um, small city, uh, welcoming facade. So I wanted to see if there, and, and this commission does have the ability to make some, uh, suggestions and, uh, with the help of the staff, uh, scale down or allow for more green space. I think one of the commissioners was speaking about that. You, as a commission, can actually ask them to go back to the drawing board or conditions of a approval, you can request that they add square footage of actual green space, which includes trees, grass. I prefer, uh, uh, plants that aren't grass, but, uh, green space in general. Um, I wanted, because it's a special permit, to make sure that this particular project, um, does, uh, take a look at the noise that could be, uh, become part of this because of, uh, delivery trucks. I ask that the, um, uh, that the, the time, uh, that the, uh, that the delivery trucks come to the, any of part of the facility be reasonable and not six in the morning. Um, I do know that you have the advantage of, of, uh, having the police station, uh, near one of the ends of, uh, the north end of your, your project, although not directly there, uh, so that they are up twenty-four seven. But on the other portions of your project, I just ask that you not add to the already lazy areas of Norwalk. I would like you to consider, um, and, and I am hoping that one day this commission with the changes in their zoning regs, as well as the industrial zones that you're going to be discussing at the end of the meeting, just as a discussion item on the progress, asks across the board that this, especially a project that is this big. Hello, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that you include, uh, solar panels and renewable energy, uh, green rooftops and, uh, green infrastructure, uh, in and around the building. Um, other towns and cities like New Haven are doing this. Uh, people are beginning across the country to incorporate, uh, in their zoning regs that it's an opt-out, not an opt-in, that they have to help reduce the city's, uh, carbon footprint by having and across the board. Now, it's not required now by the city of Norwalk, unfortunately. I'm, I'm advocating that it becomes that in the near future. But I wanted to know what this particular applicant and, and Spinnaker does very good work. I've, I've very familiar with their work, uh, down the eastern seaboard. Um, I wanted to know if indeed they're actually going to incorporate solar, uh, at least. And I'm talking about a, uh, probably rooftop solar or carport solar, if there's any carports, I don't think there are. Um, in the past, we've had some situation where with Spinnaker that they, uh, said they would put a green roof on or solar and then that was the first measure or a, or special measure canceled as the project continued on. So I just wanted to make sure that we, uh, in the spirit of, uh, moving forward and climate change, that this commission encourage the applicant to incorporate that. There's no regulation. I know that. But I do know that Spinnaker is a forward-thinking company and many of the people involved in this project have done amazing work throughout Fairfield County. So with that, I, I wanted just to say, lastly, that we are very worried in Norwalk about gentrification. And, um, while this is, uh, approved with our TOD regulations, we have to be very mindful about affordability. And so lastly, I want, I, I read the application, but I didn't see how many of the units, the hundred fifty units would be truly affordable. And with that, I'll, I'll say goodbye and thank you. And I appreciate the, the ability to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If anyone else, uh, would like to speak, uh, about this application, you could use the raise your hand tool at the bottom of your screen or, uh, we also have a phone. So you just use the raise your hand feature. Going once. I think that's it, Lou.
Okay. Um, with that then, um, I'll, uh, turn it back to Mr. Edmonton.
Thank you. So I think we addressed a lot of the things just in the earlier dialogue back and forth. But Colin, do you want to, uh, touch on the sustainability analysis we did?
Um, yeah, I don't, uh, it's the one sheet I don't have in front of me actually, but, um, we did run a, uh, an internal, uh, quick review of a lead scorecard. And I think we figured that we would be able to achieve, um, lead certification if we desire that or probably pursue another one of the metrics, uh, since a lot of the scoring is similar. So generally, when you reuse an urban site and, uh, look at, um, you know, adapting and infilling in urban conditions that are in close proximity to transit neighborhood amenities, you're able to achieve a lot of, um, a lot of credit, uh, towards those sustainability goals just by the nature of your site. And since this site is very transit adjacent and highly walkable and also developing, uh, or sorry, redeveloping, uh, an existing site that's largely impervious, there's a tremendous opportunity to improve the, uh, the water quality and water infiltration, uh, systems that, uh, are not there currently and, um, make improvements like that to the site. Uh, Vince, uh, from Red, um, sorry, Vince from Redness and Meat are civil engineers on the phone and could talk about the, uh, the water quality measures that are, that are there. Um, but, uh, in a nutshell, that's, that's the large part, but it.
Colin, can I ask a question? What would, yeah, why, why wouldn't you go forward with lead certification?
Um.
It feels a little passe of just like, we meet the requirement, but we're not going to bother with it. And it's sort of like, I really appreciate the memo you put together. I think it's a great, like, step, but it feels, uh, I, I'm left lacking with it, especially with that roof just flat and black and open and just sitting there like.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I'll let Matt speak to, to any specifics regarding, you know, what the goals are there. But in general, the building codes have been pushed a lot by LEED, uh, to go further anyway. So things like higher efficiency mechanical units, lower flow toilets and, and, uh, you know, insulation values have all crept up substantially over the years. I mean, you know, our roof insulation from, uh, building codes when I started with the firm has gone from, you know, something in the R twenties to something that's almost R forty. So it's nearly doubled in the, you know, the ten to fifteen years that I've been working, uh, with minefield architectures. So a, a lot of that's happened within probably the past eight to five to eight years. So it, it's, it's really, um, you're already getting a, a building that's much better than it was, you know, when LEED was a real hot buzzword. So the code in general, I think, is, is, is being pushed by these programs, uh, to make better buildings in a lot of ways. And there's a lot of focus on exterior insulation and just, um, you know, bringing fresh air in through the mechanical systems. That's just part of the, part of the base model codes. So, you know, it's, I, I can't say why or why not, um, you know, Matt would want to do it, but, um, I'll let him speak to that. But in general, the.
I would say there are, there are other metrics and programs, um, in particular, we're going through it now. Um, there's actually one of the primary kind of financing, on a permanent financing basis, uh, the federal government, Fannie Mae program, and they actually offer a lower interest rate if you meet a certain, um, sustainability, uh, benchmark. Um, we're pursuing that now in, in New Haven. Without changing our base plan, we're, we're going to qualify, um, and most likely we'll qualify for, for this project as well. Um, and like we said earlier, we're, we're not saying no to solar. We don't know what the mechanical system is yet. So we don't know how much of the roof we have available. There could be rooftop condensers and other things. Um, so we do have the infrastructure switch here. The transformers are all sized to accommodate a future solar system.
Well, I mean, Steve, I would wonder if that's something that we could, I don't, I don't know if we can put it as a condition if, if solar, if, if the rooftop fits, um, to move forward with that. Like, could mean that's a big gaping hole in this project. I, I love a lot of the things with the project. It just feels like it has such a potential to set a good example.
Yeah. And so you brought, you brought up previously, and so we, we're, we're just hesitant to commit to it because the next question is what size, how mu, you know, how much? And we just.
Yeah, totally.
We just don't know, you know, that without knowing how much roof's available and actually what the, you know, the technology is changing, as you probably know, and, and things are becoming more and more efficient. Um, so how we saw, you know, how we agree to what size the system is.
Yeah. And, and another thing is, uh, in, in a lot of the buildings we do with Matt and, and other buildings, we consistently meet, uh, and exceed the code, uh, for, um, energy efficiency and often get energy rebates and incentives from utility companies, uh, to make them that way. So.
Colin, we're losing you.
Sorry. Um, I was just saying that, uh, we consistently, uh, meet and exceed the code, uh, for energy use and often receive, uh, energy rebates, uh, in the buildings that we've done with Matt. So that's the, the feedback that we've, uh, we've gotten.
And I would just point out, not to throw them under the bus, but, um, the, the incentives available, sustainability incentives available through SNU are not as attractive as Eversaurus and UI throughout this thing. So, you know, we, we try to work on that. Maybe there are some new programs we don't know about that they've implemented, but we'll have that conversation with them.
Are there other questions? Uh, any comments from the staff?
Um, no, nothing additional. Um, we had raised several points with, uh, the applicant and I, I, I think, you know, he had, he's addressed a lot of those, uh, that there were comments from the commissioners that came in. In addition, um, some of the points that were raised tonight were also, uh, thoughts and questions that staff had in relation to the project. Um, I think there's, uh, there is someone with a hand up, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you do want to take any other thing from the public. I'm not sure if you want to go backwards or not at this point, but just maybe an FYI, or at least there was. Sorry, disappeared right as I said that. Um, but, you know, I think, yeah, I, I think staff has addressed most of their comments in the memo and the resolution, um, and, you know, throughout the, the process and discussion with the applicant.
Okay. Uh, Brian, is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Uh, Diane, Cece was, yeah, I could, I could bring her over. She'd like to speak. She was testing out her raising the hand, I think.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Um, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, once again, I seem to have technical difficulty, but, um, I see that you saw my hand raised now. I just really wanted to make one brief comment.
I'm sorry, Diane, can you, uh, identify yourself?
I'm sorry. Diane's Diane Cece Olmstead Place in East Norwalk. Um, I may be coming up under ENNA because I'm logged in that way, but I'm, I'm not speaking for ENNA. I'm speaking as a, a private resident. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to point something out. This is the first time I had an opportunity to take a good look at the, um, architecture and some of the, um, the, um, renditions now of the building. And I was a little concerned with, um, actually seeing now the height of this and how close the building is to the sidewalk and how it looms over the, uh, the road, depending which angle you're looking at. The applicant put up at one particular side where you can see all of the stories of the building and then the top of the building. I'm not sure what you call it, either a setback or a step back. It's where the top of the building, actually that floor is set in. And, um, the reason why I'm bringing this up and I was paying particular attention to it tonight, but this sized building is, um, recently I was listening to a, um, a radio interview, um, that actually the mayor, um, had done, Mayor Rilling had done. And he was telling the host who was talking about zoning and development in, in Norwalk, um, in general, that the design now for allowing these larger buildings, uh, particularly as part of TOD, um, would not be, um, kind of as these looming boxy buildings where someone at the sidewalk would feel overpowered, um, by the three stories or four stories or, you know, going up as high as six stories. And the way he explained it to the host was, um, the difference being this step back of that top floor. So when I saw the rendition tonight, um, it didn't appear to me that that really made any difference once you get above a certain number of stories. Because if you're, if, either if you're in a car or you're a pedestrian and you're at the street level, and particularly if you're at the sidewalk, um, right in front of the building, that, that step back, I don't think means anything because your eyes are going to see up to, um, I forget how many floors it is there now before that step back. And I'm just curious if there was, but he was referencing then in terms of the buildings, um, going forward, not being designed this way. If, if this was the intent. So this is really more of a comment than, than it is a question. But if any of the applicants want to, um, bring that slide back up and explain, um, you know, why, why that step back at height actually makes any difference to a pedestrian, um, at a building that's right on top of the sidewalk. And thank you again for recognizing me. Sorry on the technical stuff. Thank you, Mr. Brian Beaker for helping me out.
All right. Uh, Brian, is there any, anyone else we missed?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Then let's move on. Uh, Matthew, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. So just on the last comment, on the setback, I, I do think, uh, the building across this, the, the street from, uh, this project on Chestnut Street that's under construction now has the same setback. And as you're walking on the sidewalk, it, it reads as a, a four-story building, not a six story building. It's just the line of sight. You don't see those upper levels. So I do think that, that, um, requirement that was added in the, in the Sono TOD rezoning, um, even though it, um, it adds some costs, um, it was, it was a good decision. And it, it is effective in my opinion.
Lou, I have one quick, oh, go ahead.
Sure. I was just going to dovetail onto what Matt said and, and note that, um, I, I think the step back is not necessarily bad. And, and there are higher buildings in, in, in Norwalk that are in, in Sono, right around the corner that are, um, or, or buildings that are equally as tall, like the Norwalk, uh, I think the fire insurance building, uh, right next to the train tracks there is a, is a good example of a very tall building that's on a very minimal sidewalk. And, um, you, you don't, um, perceive, perceive that as being, uh, uh, offensive in any way. It's, it's a nice building and it's, uh, it's very tall and slender. Um, so this step back allows you to, uh, to pull the, the main mass of the building back and get a little bit more daylight down to the street and keep the, uh, the perceived, um, street facade, uh, from other vantage points rather than directly adjacent to the building, uh, as being a little bit lower in scale. And it helps to mitigate some of the, uh, the height with the, uh, the other buildings in the neighborhood at the moment that are historic and likely remaining for a little while.
Back to the solar point. Sorry. I was just gonna ask staff, uh, and Steve, do we have any, uh, possible conditions to add about what, just given what Matt was saying, like, would we want to throw into the, possibly throw out there?
Sorry about that. I was muted. Um, yeah, I was thinking about that, um, to try to, you know, get it in there to more articulate the, the wish of the commission, but not putting it, uh, so restricted that if there was a reason that they actually couldn't do it, that they would be bound to that. So I was thinking that when you, uh, approve the regulation for the project on Richard's Avenue for the, uh, those, the senior housing units, we put the, there was a text amendment that accompanied that application. And there was a condition and this, you know, it wouldn't necessarily mimic this a hundred percent, but it, it says, uh, "All dwellings or principal structures shall have roof, rooftop solar installed unless it is to, I can't talk tonight, sorry about that. Unless it is determined to be not feasible as determined by a feasibility report." So that would be something that if they had some kind of analysis done to indicate that they couldn't do it, that, that would be something that, that they could provide to the commission and then no longer have to provide the solar. So we could have, if you felt inclined to add that as a condition, it'd be good to, you know, bounce it off the applicant while they're here as opposed to, you know, putting that on, on them after the hearing is closed.
Yeah, I'd be curious to what other commissioners think of that, uh, and/or what Matt has to say to the.
I, I, I think it makes sense, um, to do it, particularly since, uh, they've expressed a willingness to do it if it's feasible.
Yeah, I think the issue is just how do you determine what's feasible? What's a reasonable return? Is it just on the installation of the, the solar or is it on the overall project? Yeah, I think the issue is just how do you determine what's feasible? What's a reasonable return? Is it just on the installation of the, the solar or is it on the overall project? And does the solar make that project infusible or not? That's where I'm not sure how you, how, how we come to an agreement on that, but, um, in general, yeah, we're interested in, in, in doing solar, just hesitate to, to commit to it. I'm not sure exactly what, um, project Diane Ruchella was referencing that we committed to something and didn't do, but we'll find that out and just don't want to do that in this case. So that's why I'm kind of hesitating a little bit, but open to some condition that gives us flexibility, some, a little bit of a, a set to try to, try to get it done. Without kind of jeopardizing the whole project.
Well, I think, um, we have a very reasonable staff. I think Steve is, is, um, not only easy to work with, but very reasonable. Um, and I would be comfortable, uh, leaving, uh, the, uh, decision, uh, to, um, to him based on, uh, the information that, uh, uh, you're able to provide regarding the feasibility.
We all know my view on this, so open to hear others.
It's either unanimous consent or the.
I'll take unanimous consent.
This is consent.
Putting it on there too. I mean, and checking it. Yeah. Let Steve then make the decision if it's feasible or not, you know, for the applicant to do this.
And the report back to us.
All right. And we, and we can discuss this, uh, uh, further, uh, when, um, um, we, we pull up a resolution on it. Is, uh, uh, there anything else, um, Matthew on your, on your end?
Let me know if we, if we didn't address anything that you want to address, uh, or that would came up, but we, we think we addressed pretty much everything of, of importance. We're, we're happily go through, um, some of Bob's comments in any, in any detail if you want to, many of which we agree with, some of which we've kind of discussed. We, we, we don't, and we, I think we gave decent rationale, but happy to go into any detail you want, but unless you're comfortable with it, we, we don't need to waste your time or, or anyone else beyond, beyond us on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, again, any, uh, final question before we close the hearing? All right, uh, hearing none. Um, the hearing is closed. Something I should have mentioned, uh, and I apologize for this. If there's anyone here who wants to speak on these matters. But we have removed from the, uh, agenda for this evening, uh, 2021, 22 CAM H Sunwich Road. There are apparently, um, there is an outstanding issue that need, that needs to be addressed, uh, before they can, they can come, uh, before us. And, uh, the same is true with 2021 dash 23, uh, 295 Westport Avenue, uh, the proposed Jimmy Johns. Uh, there are still some, uh, unanswered, uh, questions, uh, that we need answers to before we can act. Had we brought either of these up tonight, um, we couldn't have taken action. And we simply would have had to repeat ourselves at our July meeting. So I'm expecting that these two will be placed on our, uh, July, uh, agenda with, uh, the information that we need, uh, so that we can take action. Again, I apologize to anyone who, uh, has come to this meeting this evening to, uh, to, uh, hear what, um, we have to say about, uh, these two projects. Uh, they were not public hearings in any case, so there was no opportunity for the public to speak. But if you were interested in them, uh, again, I apologize. I, uh, expect they'll be on our, uh, July, uh, agenda. And, uh, if you're interested, I'd encourage you to, uh, take a look when we get closer to that date at the agenda, uh, to see if they're on, on that agenda. With that, uh, we'll move to, um, review and action on the, the pending, uh, application. And that is 2021 dash O nine SP Spinnaker Real Estate Partners LLC, uh, Coastal Lofts LLC. As was, uh, mentioned, uh, in the presentation, uh, there was, uh, action taken by the redevelopment agency. Steve, if you could, uh, pull that up, I'd ask our secretary to, um, just read it, uh, into the minutes of the meeting.
Sure. Give me just one sec to find it and I will do. Okay. Can you see that? Uh, Michael, do you want me to see if I can blow that up?
Uh, you've got, I think you have to blow it up.
Let me see how to blow this up since it's an email. Would it be easier if I just read it?
I think I can read it if I get nose to nose with it.
Hold on, I, I found it.
Okay.
Is that better?
Fabulous.
All right.
It says, Steve, comma, just wanted to let you know that the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency Commission unanimously voted approval of the 10 Monroe, Monroe Street application as submitted by the applicant and was generally supportive of the conditions in your department's memo. Let me know if you need anything else from the agency for this project. I am hoping to have some time this week. The East TD stuff as well, TOD stuff as well.
Yeah, that was a little.
Hopkins, comma, Director of Program Development and his phone number.
Okay.
I could also read, but.
Thank you, Galen. Uh, is there a, uh, motion, uh, to, uh, approve the application?
I'll move to.
Galen moves. Is there a second? Okay, Rod, uh, seconds. And, uh, Steve is pulling up the, uh,
Yeah.
draft language.
I just wanted you to, to point out a couple of things because it were a couple of yellow highlighted items that were outstanding. The Fire Marshal has, um, given his approval of the application to date. The date, um, the redevelopment agency actually approved it was June 21st. So I need to correct that.
Okay.
This was a condition, actually the applicant flagged that I missed that they are required to file a consolidation map on the land records prior to obtaining a zoning permit, since there are seven parcels in total. I did have the acreage wrong. It's 1.49. I had 1.23. So I corrected that as well. And I can, I don't want to, I can scroll through the conditions. You did receive them last week.
Right.
Uh, if you wanted to add the condition regarding the solar or any other conditions that were brought up as part of the discussion, I can do that. Or if you had questions on any of the specific conditions, let me know and I'll move to that number.
I, I would ask Steve, is the, uh, can we add this? I would move to add the solar condition, uh, otherwise objected.
Sure. Let me just.
Okay. And Josh, um, Nick, uh, made the motion to do that. Josh, um, seconded it.
I'm not as good as Brian at doing this, so. Yeah, we, I think it should be on the main, on the principal building because I don't think you want it on the historic smaller buildings.
You're missing a P on report and you have a T where you need an F on of.
I knew I had a couple in there.
Okay.
Uh, let me see. Is that, how is that?
Advocate, but shall install rooftop.
Solar. Yeah, roof would be good. I'm working on it. How's that?
The, um, and a report helped, or, and a report to be to, I'm sorry, whoa.
To be, to be infeasible by a report provided to the commission?
Is that regardless or only if it's not feasible?
If it's not feasible.
Okay, then we should, let's say that. Um, determines to be infeasible. Period. If such a determination is made, a report must be provided to the commission.
No.
So they don't care about, um, a report needs to be provided to the commission within a certain period of time. Like 30 days.
What do we do in the other case?
I don't remember.
We didn't have, uh, there, there was no time.
I didn't know if there was or wasn't. It was just something that crossed my mind.
Yeah, there was no time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But may I suggest that the, that the submission of the report be tied to the, uh, issuance of a building permit? That may, that would mean you wouldn't have a specific time, but you would know the project isn't going ahead without the report.
That works for me. Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Any questions on any of the other conditions that were sent out?
Do we have the usual, the new condition on upkeep in here?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
Okay.
Okay. And this, this, um, I think number 19, just to point out, I think that addresses the, um, conditions regarding or concerns regarding any changes that might result as of the HVAC or ventilation systems and how that affects the design or the plan, just to point that out.
Number 22, um, damaged. You need a D at the end of that. Now, the first one. That's it. Okay. Uh, any other comments on, um, the approval?
This will be my last comment, I promise. Um, Steve, any of the, all the things you need from, uh, relates to Bob's report are in here. There's not much of anything outstanding. You feel good about comments?
So these, this is, uh, under D, these were the, um, referenced items that needed to be changed. So I think there are. Oh, so then I think, yeah, I'm glad you flagged it.
Also, number 23, it be a resolve that Steve's dog needs to come to every zoning meeting.
That's what happens. You live in the country, something comes in the yard and the dog goes. What about, um, number nine?
I'm sorry, Steve, can you go back to 22 for one second? Cause I think you just need to put a D at the end. It's deteriorate.
Yeah, I was wondering about that when Louis mentioned the.
Yeah. And I, I said it, I suggested it, and then I realized that I'm.
You want just like that?
Becomes, uh, soon it becomes damages to it. Yeah, that works.
That's better. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So the question, I, I don't think we kind of resolved it. I think, um, uh, under number, number nine, uh, were references, the artificial turf. That was one of Bob's suggestions. The applicant provided, um, a rationale why they don't want to do that or think it's a good idea. So I'm happy to delete that if you, uh, feel that it's, you know, not, not appropriate.
Well, I certainly understand why they don't want grass there. And frankly, I don't know enough about materials to know if there is something other than a grate, uh, that could, um, replace, uh, the grass.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, you could, you could do a great, um, aesthetically. I don't know if that's it, better or worse.
Right.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Lou on this one. I, I think I was somewhat convinced of the practicality of it.
I agree. I'm persuaded by Eric Ranges' rebuttal. I'd go with the turf.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on, uh, on this approval? If, if not, uh, can I have a motion to approve?
I think I made one.
Yeah, we got, we have that. Yeah. Need to call a question now.
Yeah, Galen and Rod.
All right, then, um, we'll call the question. Um, we'd better do this as a roll call.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Cantor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And I believe the only other member, because my screen is now, I don't have it set correctly, Mr. Schulman.
Yes.
I believe that's unanimous.
No, we have, um, Mr. Rowena who.
He's, 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 uh, recused himself.
Right. I understand that. Uh, does that mean he doesn't, uh, uh, vote?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. He can't simply abstain?
Nope. He, yeah, he has to not be in a position based on his own determination to influence any of the voting members on the, on the whole decision.
Okay. Good. All right. Uh, then it passes. Uh, thank you. Well, I think this was, uh, uh, a, a good conversation. I think it's, project, uh, that is, uh, worthy of the city. Look forward to seeing it, uh, move forward. And, uh, Bob, thank you very much, uh, for your input.
But thank you.
All right. Um, we need to move on. 10 dash 17, uh, 17 SP U Street Partners, Briarwood Road, five unit conservation development. Request to modify previously approved plans. We just received, um, those revised plans, or I just saw them today for the first time because the, they were set up sideways, uh, on our, on our website and I couldn't read them. Uh, I assume Attorney Suchi, uh, you'll be making the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will.
Okay. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, 707 Summer Street, Stanford, Connecticut, and I represent the new owners of the property, JDMU LLC. My client submitted, uh, to staff, I believe it was last week or the week before, revised plans in connection with a conservation development, uh, that was approved by this body in 2018. Before I move forward, and I didn't want to forget, I do also wish Mr. Johnson all the best and I appreciate the time and effort that he has spent, uh, on this board over the past few years and, uh, his presence and his insights and information will sorely be missed. But thank you for your service, Mr. Johnson, and I wish you the best in whatever you do. And I'm sure that you'll be back serving the city in some way, shape or form in the near future. Uh, just by way of background, some of you may recall this application from 2018, but I want to take you back a little bit before that. Actually, a conservation development was approved in 2003 for four units. Some of, I don't think any of you were on the, the board at that time, but then in 2018, application 10 dash 17 SP was approved. And that was for a five unit conservation development. It was approved in April. Uh, the certificate of special permit was reported in this year along with the, um, approved map. Uh, in 2018, Commissioners Sumter, Johnson, Witherspoon, Schulman, Wells and Rowena were members of the board who reviewed and ultimately approved the application. There were no, uh, there was no opposition. There was no, um, uh, vocal support for the project, but it was nevertheless approved in 2018. My clients have sought to make some minor changes to the development if possible. If Brian could screen share, um, the most recent plan. The changes are so very minor that I hope that you would view them as the, as that.
You got it, Brian?
So you've got.
Yeah, can you see that? Yeah, can you see that?
Yeah, can you, can you possibly screen share the site plan?
Lou, you can see me going.
The design of the dwellings have changed a little bit, uh, but what's most important is the site plan is virtually identical to the plan that you approved in two thousand and eighteen. The changes are that the houses are slightly smaller and instead of them being about twenty-two hundred square feet of footprint, they're about just over two thousand. There is still forty feet of distance between each dwelling and that is required under the conservation development for properties in this zone. As a matter of fact, uh, they, the distance between the dwellings is anywhere between forty-four and fifty-four feet. And all other conditions of approval from two thousand and eighteen would remain in place. And the houses as redesigned by my client meet the height and number of stories as, um, the maximums in the zone which property is located. This is the revised site plan. So you'll see the five dwellings. Generally, they are almost identical to the dwellings that were proposed and approved in two thousand and eighteen. And in between those dwellings, there is at least forty feet as required by the regulations. Uh, the Department of Public Works, I believe, has signed off on the project. It is under review by the Health Department because there is septic and wells. And without, other than that, that really is the long and short of this. Same number of houses, same general configuration, same open space required under the conservation development. A conservation easement will be prepared and submitted if you deem this, these changes to be minor, and I can get that to staff for, for staff to review and then for staff to then share it with Corporation Council next week. So that is the long and short of the, the application that's before you, a straight modification. We hope that you deem these changes minor in nature.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Attorney Sachi? I mean, this appears to me, uh, to be a relatively minor change, and it's simply a, a site plan review. So we can, if you agree, we can simply approve the changes.
I agree.
These changes look minor.
Okay. Okay. I, I'm sorry, Galen. I couldn't hear you. You're muted.
I said, me too.
Okay.
Well, it wasn't worth.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to that effect to approve, uh, the project?
So moved.
Michael approved. I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
Rich.
Rich, Rich seconded. I think we can, uh, do this with a show of hands. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, any oppose? Any abstentions? All right, it passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Appreciate your time and your effort. Have a nice upcoming weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, twenty twenty-one dash oh three S P R, seven sixty-one Main Avenue. Uh, proposed four-story, one hundred and thirty-two unit multifamily dwelling on existing mixed-use development site. Uh, again, uh, this is a site plan, uh, review. And I would welcome, uh, the presenter to speak about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Lynn, are you on?
I am.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is the application that you have previously seen. It is for a hundred and thirty-two.
I, I apologize, Ms., Ms. Ward. Uh, can you identify yourself and give your address, please?
I'm Lynn Ward for I Park Norwalk, seven sixty-one Main Avenue. I'm assisted here tonight by Lauren Calabria for, for I Park Norwalk, and we have our two professional firms, Pistole Engineering and P S and S Architects with us. And as I was saying, the application is unchanged from what has been before you. It is for a hundred and thirty-two unit multifamily building at I Park Norwalk. I Park Norwalk is a mixed-use complex. It has an L A fitness. It has medical offices. It has Canon down bicycles. Uh, this application is to round out this mixed use. It is an Uno project, as we have explained in the past. That is our brand, which means basically that these are all one-bedroom and studio apartments. Uh, I think that we are here tonight because the only things that have changed since we were last here have been we've addressed many comments on the traffic.
Um, are there, Steve, are there comments from the staff on this?
Yes, so Lou, this was, uh, if you remember, we, we had this peer reviewed by W S P. So we have Phil Cherry from, from W S P on the line if you had any questions in particular to any of the traffic issues, um, that were flagged when they had first submitted the application.
Would you mind giving the two-minute, uh, summary of your, of your peer review?
Sure, no problem. Philip Cherry with, uh, W S P. Uh, we have reviewed, uh, a couple of iterations of this application and requested, uh, some information between our first review and the second, and the client, or any applicant, excuse me, has, has provided that information. What we were really looking for, I think our biggest concern was circulation within the site. As, as detailed, you know, there's a couple of buildings and there's a lot of parking, but adding this additional apartment. We, we had a concern about the number of additional pedestrian trips within the parking area, crossing that parking, and so we had requested some additional information on the circulation, uh, for vehicles and pedestrians within that area as well as some additional pedestrian protections, additional sidewalk, crosswalk striping. Uh, we had also requested the relocation of some of the accessible parking spaces. They had been located uh, further from the, from the actual building than we had felt, uh, was, was necessary. And, uh, so, so circulation was, was a main component that we had evaluated. Um, we also had requested a construction and staging plan, understanding that there is, there are other uses and the applicant had, uh, proposed a garage and that there will be a hotel actually in, in Wilton. Um, we just wanted to make sure that between all the lay-down areas and staging and construction that, that during all of that activity, that parking was not going to be constrained, um, at the site. And so that information was provided earlier, or actually late last week, and we have, we have reviewed that. Um, we, we've reviewed all of the analyses in terms of intersection operations, trip generation and distribution, safety analyses, and we feel comfortable with those analyses, um, both in terms of what the applicant has proposed, um, in terms of improvements to the signal timing, mainly at the West Rocks Road at Main Avenue intersection. Uh, both, both with that and then sort of in combination with the upcoming Condot Route Seven, Route Fifteen project that proposes to add capacity to this roadway in this intersection. We, uh, the applicant essentially use Condot's volumes and, and other analyses to. Part of this analysis, um, but we, we're also comfortable with, um, with the signal timing and other mitigation measures from a traffic perspective that they've implemented to, uh, in, in case that project gets delayed. Uh, our one recommendation that I did discuss was, was that the existing intersection, um, ADA pedestrian accommodations at West Rocks Road at Main Avenue. Some of those ramps are deficient. They're not ADA compliant, and then there are missing pedestrian signal heads at that location. And given that there will be additional pedestrians likely using that intersection to cross Main Avenue to access Walmart and other businesses and restaurants, we felt it was important for that ADA compliance to, to meet standard uh, for, for all, all users to, to cross that road. Happy to answer any, any specific questions, but those were sort of the main things we were looking at and have requested.
Questions, uh, from the commissioners?
The conduct improvements worked in, uh, targeted, is there a date for that yet? I know last we heard it sort of up in the air.
I, I looked at the website for that project. It is listed as a, as a quote major project on Condot's website. Um, I believe they're still in the sort of environmental planning and maybe just getting started into the preliminary design phase. Uh, based on our review, we felt that the applicant's sort of incorporation of that project was reasonable, given the timeline on Condot's website of, of two thousand and twenty-five, sort of being when that would come online. But, but as I mentioned, the applicant has also included signal timing, uh, mitigation measures to improve operations in advance of that project coming online. Certainly, that project would add capacity to help with traffic operations. Um, but we wanted to make sure that in case that project is delayed, um, that, that you're not sitting there for ten years and, and suffering traffic congestion until that project comes in. So, uh, the applicant did demonstrate that with, with signal timing improvements that those, that, that any traffic congestion could be, could be mitigated.
I think it's fair, fair, fair to say, having dealt with, um, conduct for, um, over forty years, uh, that it's highly unlikely, this is a project that is going to be completed by two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, so I'm, I'm happy. I mean, I understand why, uh, they, they would include that. As unrealistic as I think it is. Uh, so I am pleased, uh, that, uh, they have, uh, developed other wa, other ways to mitigate the traffic issue. Uh, another question for you, Brian, and that is, uh, if I remember correctly, there's to be a parking garage on the Wilton side. And there was just some concern, uh, that if this project goes forward and that one doesn't, there might be some issues?
Sure. So, um, yeah, with the, with the proposed development, um, they're looking at, um, based on providing it, the eighty percent affordable units with the one percent construction fee, they could drop their parking down to one space per unit, which is a hundred and thirty-two spaces. So total for the site, they would end up needing the, the parking garage in order to have sufficient parking. So we've tied the conditions of approval um, to the parking garage. If you choose to, to approve, um, one that they obtain, um, let me, let me see how I, how I worded it. Um, but it was, it was that they would have to first get a building permit from the town of Wilton before we would issue them a zoning permit, um, for the construction of the apartment building. And then in order to get a C O for the apartment building, they need to have a C O from the town of Wilton for the parking garage.
Okay, good.
Remind me, this question, are you guys putting solar on the roof? I forget with this one.
So the answer to that is that we already have solar on the roof of I Park Norwalk. This is quite an interesting discussion because we in fact have had it for over six years. Uh, we did it at a time where there was a tax break for doing it. It, we don't think it's been all that efficient, just by the way. Um, but we've recently been reviewing it and we're putting more solar on several of the roofs there. And we would do this as long as it is practicable, the same thing. We would add to the solar fields that we already have at I Park Norwalk. We are a component of that.
That makes sense. You got a lot of open space there, so you can imagine that being really useful at scale.
We've used a few of the roofs.
Brian, can we, uh, include, uh, language similar to, uh, the language, um, we put into the Spinnaker approval? For this as well?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask a question regarding the traffic, um, study or report.
Sure.
Was the, um, signal timing that you were talking about to improve the intersection at West Rocks, Route Seven, and then the entrance into the I Park? Is, is that what you meant?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just asking about that because in my humble opinion, that intersection is probably the worst intersection in Norwalk with coming down West Rocks Road and having a choice about turning into Bank of America, Walmart, or waiting for people coming out of there or going into the gas station or making a left into the rug store, or then getting to Route Seven and making a left, right, or going straight. So what would the, what would light timing do to affect that?
Signal timing can, can offer a number of opportunities. There could also be improvements to, um, if, if need be, there could be a discussion of whether the controller detection of that intersection could be improved. Um, signal timing can, can make sure that you're, you're sort of term in the industry would be more efficient as far as making sure that you're not, you're not giving green time to a movement that doesn't need that time and is, and are proportioning it, uh, more proportional to, to the demand that's, that's being faced by those heavier movements. So there's, there's a couple of different ways that it can improve that, but, uh, typically the way this is done, and, and I've, I've been on the other side of this table. Um, as, as an applicant, typically you, you retain that existing signal timing either from a town or a D O T, or you go collect it yourself. And then there's a number of different software programs where you can optimize that signal timing and look for efficiency gains in trying to, uh, reduce the delays that the different vehicles or users would, would face. So we reviewed their, their optimized timings and felt that those optimized timings were reasonable based on industry standards.
Thank you.
And then to, to kind of double dip on the, the traffic, so T M P, uh, Transportation Mobility and Parking did also review um, the parking analysis. They also looked at W S P's report, and, um, they just submitted their findings late this afternoon and found pretty much the same things that, that Bill and W S P had recommended. Um, they did want, as part of the conditions of approval, um, which we even included as, as part of, of, of the conditions is that the signal timings and phasing improvements should be required as the condition of approval. So, um, yeah, we, we, we've added that. So the, the signal timings is something that will come up again.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I omitted to mention that John Canning of Kimberly-Horn, our traffic engineer, is in fact present this evening as well.
Thank you. Uh, are there any, uh, other questions? All right, um, then, uh, can I have a, uh, motion? We have, um, a recommended, um, uh, language, Brian? Can you pull that up? And can you make it slightly larger? Thank you.
Since one of the highlighted things are some of the updates that we've added. So we've updated the date of the, uh, engineering plans to the most recent ones. Uh, per Phil's, uh, traffic report, we've kind of specified this language a little bit further. Um, in case there are any environmental land use restrictions, we just had the applicant verify that this construction does not violate any, if any, exists, which, um, we were told there are none. Um, here's the solar panel language.
Okay.
I think it's as similar to what Steve wrote as I could remember.
We can just copy and paste the condition over if you want to.
That's true.
Same.
And then we added, um, they did get a wetlands permit. Um, so we've included that. And here's the language that all T M P's conditions are applicable to this.
And do we have the damaged condition? Is that not applicable for a site plan?
Um, you can add it. I was thinking that because it's not, you know, architecturally peer reviewed.
That's true. That makes sense. Leave it to others care, but it makes sense, I think.
All right, any, any questions on, uh, the document? Uh, if not, uh, can I have a, a motion to either approve or disapprove? Please? All right, Josh approved.
No, give it to Rod.
Okay, Rod approved. Okay, Rod approves, Josh seconds. Um, let's do a uh roll call on um on this.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Mr. Cantor. Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes.
Ms. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Rowena.
Going to abstain.
Okay, one abstention. Hmm, who did I miss? Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
And Mr. Schollman. Yes. Okay, that was I think is five, five zero one, I believe. What I miss?
Me, Rod Johnson.
Oh, oh, right. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, I think six zero one. Okay. Um, site plan review is approved.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's been a pleasure. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, um, i- in the area of continuing discussion, twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty one dash twenty. RM zoning commission, building zone regulation, text amendment to create the East Norwalk Village TOD Zone, EBTZ. And uh, this is a continuation of the conversation we've been having uh regarding this uh this zone. Steve, um, you want to begin? Steve, you're muted. No, I'm I'm not having my best zoom night tonight. Stretch of the imagination. Now, give me just one sec to get to our organize and I'll pull up my screen. Okay, how's that? Is that a good size or do you need me to enlarge that? Uh, if you can enlarge it, that's even better. All right, um, just to go, I'll I'll just recap from the beginning, just it's been a little while, so I just to refresh your memory. The area we're talking about, this is obviously East Norwalk. Here's exit sixteen, here's East Avenue running north, south through the area. The parcels that are highlighted in kind of a gray hatch, those are for the most part parcels currently zone neighborhood business. The plan recommends that this area be rezoned to a new village district. The parcels in blue, those are also currently uh zone NB neighborhood business and the plan recommends those get. Uh, rezoned to see residential. The parcels in green, which run east, west for the most part along uh the Metro North Train Station, which is, excuse me, the train tracks and the station being kind of at the center here. Those are I one zone parcels and it's recommended that they remain I one with some uh minor modifications. And as you know, we are in the middle of the industrial zone study, which has further recommendations that might come into play down the road for this area. The bulk and height schedule, just wanted to point out. The highlights not showing up on the screen here. I did make one change that I wanted to touch on with you. We have prior, we had a recommendation that used the uh two hundred square foot per dwelling unit for the rec area. Uh, the staff is recommending that we reduce that or not require it. Uh, part of the rationale, there's several uh several reasons why. One being that uh with smaller developments, a lot of times the rec space that you see kind of is kind of useless. In my opinion, useless space that's not really utilized for the tent of it where you have like balconies counting towards that very small green areas of lawn that really aren't used for recreation space. In addition, it's 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 hard to fill up commercial space. So when you see the larger developments, like, you know, some of the ones you approved tonight, they'll have uh like a substantial gym inside of them or substantial recreation area. Where that for the larger projects, that's expected as part of the amenity package. And there's nothing preventing anybody from putting that in any development in this area. We're just recommending that we don't require it. And another part of that thought is that to to potentially fill up some of that ground floor commercial space where that could be a gym. That, you know, the tenants from the building could go to as well as the residents of the area. So that's another, you know, potential. Ground floor tenant for some of these sites. So just wanted to highlight that for you. To go through the changes that um were in included in the, oh, this is, excuse me, the test fits. I'll get to that a little bit. Jumping ahead of myself. So to to go through the regulation and I'm just gonna highlight. I'll I'd like to have a broader discussion, but I just wanted to highlight changes since the last document you saw, and I don't think there were a lot. I touched on the rec space change to the bulk and height standards. Um, this came up and I got an email from uh Miss CC with some questions and I believe Mr. Cantor had asked about this last time. We did, this was in in the last set, but I figured it would be worthwhile to touch on again. We did change a couple of the minimum recommended square footage size to, you know, regulate less special permits and have things more from a site plan approval standpoint. If the commission feels strongly that the those thresholds should be maintained, you know, we could um. You know, revert back to the prior language. Um, but you know, that kind of my reasoning behind that would be is that, you know, you you've kind of. You know, you know, the with going with a village district with strong design guidelines, you're kind of at a hybrid kind of uh form based approach to this. So you're kind of indicating that, you know, in in many of these areas, you'd like to have the ground floor. You know, where it is commercial, you're not so much worried about what the individual tenants are. Each one of these applications is subject to its own traffic report. So if they were proposing a larger restaurant, they would have to justify that. And then also, you know, the larger restaurants going to require larger parking mass. So that's also going to come into play on the feasibility end of it from from the developer's standpoint. Uh, and I'm just gonna zoom down to a couple of the changes that we put in to the amenity schedule. As I indicated, most of this was in the last draft, so there's not a lot of new material here. And um, please, at any point in time, uh, stop me and ask questions. The 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 one thing uh before I get into the fit test, the, you know, keep in mind that the amenity points are, I I think. Are in a pretty good place. I think they'll probably be tweaked a little bit more before we go to public hearing. And so, you know, a couple. Sure. So there's a couple of things like the um, the green wall, we added a minimum square footage where we thought maybe, you know, some of the other. Uh, some of the other items to be consistent had those square footage requirements, so we wanted to have that as well. Excuse me, and a couple of things that came up. Uh, just on the staff level, we were discussing different kind of green amenities and two items that came up were geothermal. And the idea of a porous pavement or, you know, porous concrete that could be added in. And uh, so along with what you see with the rooftop solar is, you know, one item and Brian had flagged this when he was looking at it again was. The the initial proposal was you get the one point for every thousand square feet of um roof area. Provided that you use a minimum of fifty percent of the roof area. And Brian has been doing a lot of work uh with the solar campaign for the city. And so based on kind of his his knowledge base with this and talking to the solar providers was think what if we, as opposed to looking at a roof area? What if we looked at it from, you know, like an energy um output they actually produce? Because as these units become more efficient, they may actually be able to produce more electricity in a smaller area. Or look at it from a percentage of the building that is powered by the solar. So those are two things that we'd like to, in between now and your July twenty first meeting, come back with a little more solid recommendation. Very similar to the geothermal, which, you know, maybe that is uh, i- i- you know. You're, you know, with a bigger building, you're gonna need a larger area to implement this, so we'd probably want to do a little more research on that as well. For the porous concrete, we think that it's uh, you know, what's written there kind of, you know, could make sense. There are a lot of advantages to the porous uh concrete, keeping in mind that they do require annual upkeep uh where they actually have to vacuum out those spaces. Because if sand is applied or just, you know, regular um runoff from tires, people dragging things onto the site, leaf uh litter and. You know, other things that might come off they, those pores can get filled up, so they loot could lose their um effectiveness over time, so they do need annual maintenance. But there are so many good things with this that, you know, the with these porous concrete, they do um negate the the requirement for so much other kind of. Stormwater infrastructure, they actually can improve water quality and can actually store water under those sites, which. You know, if you think about some of the areas, especially, and this could apply to any of the older areas of the city. Where, you know, they were developed really before we had drainage standards. A lot of this is just sheet flow of water. So the water hits the hits the asphalt or hits the rooftop and then it just runs. It's not in its, you know, then it finds the nearest storm drain or low line point where this could actually. You know, help in some of these kind of flooded and inundated areas.
Hey, Steve, I have one question.
Yeah.
More efficient uh solar panels. So let's say the solar panels get super efficient. And so ten of them would supply the uh, the building a hundred percent, but they had room to put twenty on. Well, why wouldn't they put twenty on? They sell them into the power grid, sell that energy into the power grid. And little by little by little, more and more of the energy in the power grid is produced by these solar panels.
That's a really good question. Um, and I I maybe we could add something in about po- points for adding power back into the system. With the only caveat being sometimes there are difficulties with selling power back to the grid. So we might want to do a little bit more, we we as part of the other research, we can come back with a recommendation on that and and kick it around a little more. And keep in mind, um, you know, July twenty first is. I I I, you know, it's not going to be up for public hearing. It's just going to be an additional discussion, which I'm hoping at that point. You'll you'll be at a place where you're comfortable with the documents, where we can refer it out and schedule a public hearing for September. And and even at that point, you won't be taking any action on it, so that we're not in any kind of rush with this.
Steve, one thing you were, I think I've talked to Tommy to counsel about is um, I know Lou was talking about this last time, the paradigm here of opt inverse requirements. Of of, did we get any answer on that?
Right, so I I have an uh email in, uh, still waiting to connect definitively with Corporation Counsel. On the, you know, the, do we have the e- enabling legislation there to require some of these things? Um, the the Planning Committee of Common Council, who I I plan on uh reviewing this with at their next meeting in July. They did request that um, you know, the green amenities and, you know, sustainable measures be kind of um front and center in this. So if you can see on the screen uh A and B in the red text, so to to there, there's the two levels.
Yep.
As proposed to achieve uh two of the different uh bonus levels. The first one is fifteen points and this in in the the way we uh couched it is ten, ten points of those, which is two thirds. Have to be uh of of the sustainable variety. Same thing with the um twenty points below, and we had that at thirteen out of the twenty points. So that's the kind of the way that we said, if you want these bonuses, you're gonna have to give us these amenities. Here's your list, but two thirds of those need to be uh sustainable. Steve, um, uh, something occurs to me about um, uh, if you will, the overbuilding of uh of solar. Uh, and I I just want to mention it. I don't even know if it's uh if I'm right about this. Uh, but there's uh, obviously there's a cost to installing solar. And typically, uh, you know, like upgrading the lighting in a building. Um, there's a payback over a certain number of years. And uh, so it while it may be nice to talk about uh selling power back to the grid. You know, if the if the payback period is long. Um, it could be a financial disincentive to do any more than is necessary. Uh, by um, uh, someone who's installing solar. I just think we ought to keep that in mind. Certainly, yeah, I know those are, those are um. Those are good questions, and I think that Will, Brian and I'll put our heads together and try to reach out to uh the contacts that we have doing this kind of work and and. Get their take on it and see what they think is feasible, not feasible. That was one of the reasons that I was thinking, you know, well, if we have that, the joint public hearing in September. I I mean, I I obviously we want to hear from the public, but I also want to hear from the developers to say, you know what? Uh, the last thing we want to do is put a set of regulations in that's not feasible for them, because then otherwise we've kind of defeated the purpose of going through the entire exercise. Sure. I'm hoping so. Those are some of the questions that will get addressed as part of that process.
I just have one really quick question. You know, you're talking about the payback. Over time, you save a certain amount of money with all of the uh green initiatives. You know, like better lighting and the solar panels, but if you produce excess electricity, you're selling it into the grid, you're getting an immediate payback. Like.
Well, you 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 are, but what percent of that uh uh additional cost for the in for installing additional solar? Does that cover? I mean, if it covers only a relatively small portion. Um, again, may it may, it may be economically in in feasible. But I think Steve's approach to talking uh with other experts and talking with developers. Uh, makes a lot of sense to get answers to those kinds of questions.
No, I totally agree with that. We have to have good answers, but I was just, it just made me curious. I I didn't understand what the disincentive would be when you're selling it, but. I see what you're saying.
And I can um. I I can, I'm happy to um, I I sent out the memo, which was like a one page memo and it had those kind of fit test scenarios that were with that. I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at those. I can, I can pull those up if you'd like. Um, I what one thing, the the at the the consultant had done some fit tests as part of their analysis. But I tried to, I wanted to look at it a little differently and actually, and then this is where we run into a little problem and maybe I'll email Rod offline later on about this is. Is just to the point of making sure this actually works. And I had Jonathan Hopkins and the redevelopment agencies and architects, so I sent him those as well and asked him just to take a look to see, you know, if we, if we implement this, is it actually. Going to be feasible for someone to go forward. I think one thing Brian and I just concluded based on looking at it, trying to just use like simple blocks to try to fit them into some of these sites. That if you're under uh probably, I don't know, half acres, the breaking point, but if you're smaller lots, it's probably the. There won't be a much of an incentive for you to redevelop your properties and whi- which tends to lead to the the need to. Well, as you saw, like with the ten Monroe Street application, to compile properties together. And and the the TOD plan itself does reference that in there, saying, you know, that's that's a likely outcome and that's probably what it's going to take. To redevelop some of these sites, because a lot of them are are smaller in in areas. And I actually to to the concerns of the neighbors, that probably leads to less development and definitely spreads the development out over a longer period of time. Because when you had uh different ownership and you have different um, you know, people are at different stages and they don't want to sell. Um, you know, it's probably not going to all happen very quickly, just be based on my in experience with these kind of things.
So you're saying that is evidence of, is that a problem or is that just um? Like, would you do something differently as a result of that?
I don't know if it is a problem or not. I think that the idea is if. I mean, it it, I like, like I said, it's definitely subject to further penciling out. But if if the breakpoint is that you're like three quarters of an acre or maybe it's an acre lot. If that's like the minimum size you need to have a good viable development. Then I I maybe that's con- exactly consistent with the plan and that's what we want. We want to see uh development that is meaningful and and substantive in that area. And if somebody can't um conglomerate a several quarter acre parcels together or the smaller parcels, then that maybe that doesn't develop. Then you'd have to make a decision whether that that was a concern to you and maybe that would be something we could adjust down the road if if it didn't seem like an issue at this point.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And it seems like there's a big balancing act with with the. With this village district of like wanting to enable a level of redevelopment, but not a um. Not complete scrap it down in in a quick way.
No, and I don't think that's likely. I mean, there are.
I don't think it's likely in any, what you're saying either. So I think it's it sort of strikes that balance.
Yeah, uh, assuming, assuming that the the. Yeah, assuming, assuming that the, the the regulations that as they are constituted or similar to what are they constituted are feasible. I would expect you'll, you know, there's one project that was floated, you know, at the very beginning of the TOD planning process. And I, maybe there are a few other people working in the weeds, waiting to see what we do. No one's approached me outside of that one application very early on, so it doesn't, I mean, sometimes I get surprised when projects come in, but a lot of times I'm tipped off ahead of time that something's coming down. And I did not make any changes to the design guidelines. I know we didn't really get into them too much at last time. And again, we don't have to make any decisions tonight. If you want to take more time to look at them, but if you've had any thoughts on those, I'm happy to go through those and address any concerns or questions.
One question on the design guideline. There we go. At the top, where we say for the peer review, there we go, peer review requirements. Would we want to include some sort of narrative of how they're meeting the light, LID, I can't ever remember all these acronyms.
Oh, low, low impact development?
Yeah, like how they're meeting the promotion of sustainable design through LID standards. What was it? Seven B or seven A and B? I thought, I, I, I mean, for what it's worth, I thought the narrative that 10 Monroe was helpful, albeit lacking. But I thought maybe if that's a way to bring that sort of front of mind to the conversation, maybe requiring that sort of narrative. I don't know if that's a good idea. Just creates, I don't also want to do if it's just going to create an extra burden.
Yeah. If you don't mind, if you don't mind emailing me that and I can take a look. The only thing like that section itself, and I, I'm not opposed at all to what you're saying, that section itself was, we pulled a lot of language from state statute regarding the Village District Act itself, just to make sure we were as consistent as possible. From what you're describing, I don't think that's an issue, but I just want to.
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll email you and Brian right.
Any more on this? No, I see a lot of heads shaking. Anything else, Steve?
No, I mean, I'm assuming then you're okay. We can add it one more time for discussion in July and then start the, you know, the referral process because that does take a little while. We have to refer it out to Connecticut Deep Harbor Management, Planning Commission and so forth.
I think that's fine. I think, I think we ought to, we ought to continue the momentum, especially those things that can be done through the summer that don't require any public input. Since I don't want to disadvantage the, the, the public when it, when it comes to moving this forward. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. The next two items, as I pointed out earlier, under review and action on new applications, some which Road and the Jimmy Johns are off the agenda. We'll be back on the agenda I am expecting at our July meeting. Next is 70 North Main Street Live Music from Ipanema Restaurant. As you're facing the movie theaters, if you, for, if you haven't had a chance to go down there, Ipanema is off, off to the right on North Main Street. Now, e- either Steve or Brian, I, I understand we're trying to get out of the business of approving music in, in, in these venues. Where does that stand?
Nowhere. When we saw this, you know, these, all these, you know, because the noise ordinance is pretty new, that the, the adopted one, obviously, and the, it seems that the zoning staff and zoning commission has a pretty small role overall in that. And it's, you know, the, the big thing is we don't, we don't do the go out and do the enforcement on these kinds of things in terms of going out and measuring sound that any of these establishments when complaints are received. And a lot of the regulations defer to the Health Department or Police Department. Only thing that we've ever gotten involved with is making sure that an establishment had its doors or windows closed when they were playing music. So in my opinion, I don't see why zoning is getting in the middle of live music if that's being regulated really by other, other departments.
Okay. Well, I, 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 I agree with you. Nonetheless, here we are in the middle of it. I had asked a question and there was a memo issued by the sound engineer on this. And my question was in, in, in particular, as we talk about in a moment, 86 and 88 Washington Street, they're next to one another. And do the sound levels from the two venues increase the sound levels beyond what the regulations permit? And the response from the sound engineer is that it would increase at nobody's fault and, and, and nobody could be held responsible for this apparently. But it would increase the sound level by about three decibels. Three decibels doesn't sound like much. So I, I looked up how loud is three decibels? And the response I get on Google is an increase of three decibels is a doubling of sound intensity. A doubling of sound intensity. But it needs to be an increase of 10 decibels in your decibel readings to be heard as double the level of noise by the ear. So I'm not certain what sound intensity means. But it does sound concerning. Whether we can do anything about that, I'm not sure. Since if, if, you know, if, if, if the regulation says 80 dB A and they're putting out 80 dB A and not going beyond that, but when you listen to the two together, it's actually 83 dB A. And, and you can't hold them responsible for that because they're sticking to the 80 dB A. I don't know how to respond to that.
I don't think we can make them responsible for their neighbor's noise. You know, they can't control the neighbor's noise.
Well, and that's essentially what he's saying.
Yeah, I would venture that at least with the 86 and 88 Washington Avenue, that those are very, those are, that's a street, that's an area where this kind of noise is expected.
Yeah. And by the way, the, and by the way, Saltwater is just down the street. I mean, it's all within a half block.
Right.
So, I mean, Ipanema is around the corner, but Tableau Public Wine Bar and Saltwater are within a half block.
Right.
So that just is what it is. I don't think they're all going to be playing music at the same time. And even so, as Galen just said, I mean, it is kind of the atmosphere there. And I assume they're not going to do this every night. You know, I would presume.
I think, could we limit it to the weekends? So people can expect it?
Let's, let's take them one at a time. Ipanema has nothing above. That's a one-story building. There are no residences immediately nearby. You have to cross the street and go up another 75, 100 feet before you hit any residences. So I mean, that one seems to me to be a no-brainer.
Yep. Let's vote on it. I agree.
Okay. Again, I think we can, we can, from your head movements, it looks to me like we can do this just by the raising of hands. All those in favor of approving requests for live music for Ipanema?
Just need a second, Lou, before you vote.
Oh, thank you. Galen moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rod, second?
Rich.
Sorry about that, Richard. All those in favor, raise your hands.
I'm very pro music.
That's unanimous. The second one is 86 Washington. And that's to Blau, the wine bar. What's your pleasure?
I think restaurants should be allowed to have live music.
I do too.
I think restaurants have gone through quite the ordeal this past year. The least we could do is give them the ability to let them entertain people.
And it's summertime.
And it's summertime.
All right. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, well, I'm sorry. I saw Josh and then Michael seconding. All those in favor, raise your hands again. That's also approved unanimously.
I find it ironic that we're doing a sound vote by raising hands, but whatever.
You'd rather do it by whistle? Yeah.
As long as the decibels aren't too high.
Number 88, the Public Wine Bar. Motion to approve. Richard moves. Nick, did you second?
I can.
Okay, Nick seconded. All those in favor? Surprisingly unanimous. And finally, 128 Washington Saltwater. Motion to approve, Richard again, second.
Second.
Michael beat you out. Sorry, Josh. Michael seconds. All those in favor? Also unanimous. Okay. Next, status report on the industrial zone study. The zoning regulations rewrite and South Norwalk TOD study.
This will take a total of 30 seconds to go, and go through these. So industrial zones, not much change. We're still just refining the recommendations and that'll go out to the committee. I'm hoping as soon as possible, but it might be a couple of weeks, but it's pretty close. We did get the contract should be signed for the waterfront portion of that. So that will hopefully get started as soon as we get the industrial zones draft report out for public consumption. They'll start working on that phase of it. Zoning regulations, it's, there's, they're have meetings set up with some of you folks coming up in the next couple of weeks. End of July is the first kind of public meeting, just to kind of introduce the project and explain where things are going. And then September is their kind of big public participation event where they get a lot of feedback. So they're on schedule and going forward. Nothing new, so no TOD as far as I know.
Will the public meetings be in person or will they be Zoom?
The, the July 29th one is going to be Zoom, but the September one, which is a multi-day big event is going, is planning public.
I see.
Okay, that's subject, it's subject to change based on who knows what.
Discussion of the merging of the Planning and Zoning Commissions into a single commission. The, I had Steve send out the proposed language to everyone. The reason being, the council committee, the ordinance committee, that, is it ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah. The ordinance committee is scheduling a public hearing on this, although they're not moving it quickly. They, they probably won't be a full public hearing again until September. And it wouldn't be implemented until January because of the election. But they are nonetheless on this language scheduling a, a public hearing for July. And I wanted to ask you, which is why I had the language sent out, if you want the commission as a whole, or if you as individuals wanted to comment at the public hearing. Frankly, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. But I wanted to give you that opportunity.
The, the new language, the new regs do not, if I read it correctly, Steve, do not have term limits in them. Is that right?
They may have, they may have term limits. There's, there's, there's some discussion among the committee members as to what those term limits ought to be. But my sense was the, you know, term limits may be 10 years. Totally. And heaven forbid, but it also means by the way that as of January 1st, unless we're appointed to the new combined commission, we come off the commission. There's no guarantee that any, any of us will be on the new commission, but it's my expectation that the mayor will probably want to have some contribution on a combined commission, should that be what, what the council approves. So I'm certainly not getting the feeling that there are really strong feelings about this. Do you want to just let it run its course without? I, I have been providing some input. It's been pretty limited. I've mostly been listening at their meetings. I, I haven't really expressed expressed strong feelings about anything much, except that I don't want the new commission to be too large, so large that it's unmanageable, so large that we make our meetings too long. I mean, if it had 15 or 20 members, you'd never, you'd never get through an agenda. So, you know, I think there have to be a reasonable number of members on the combined commission. They also have done their best, I think, to address the issue that I had brought up regarding the capital budget. And they have changed somewhat the responsibilities regarding the capital budget review by this new commission, which I think should make it somewhat less of a burden than it currently is in terms of the amount of time that needs to be spent on it.
My, my. Could you explain why you feel that way?
Why I feel, which way, Richard?
About the not as much of a strain handling the budget aspect of it.
Well, they, they, the, the Planning Commission has several, has, has one very long week when they discuss and review the capital budget. And, and I don't mean to denigrate in any way the work that they do or how hard they work at it. But their decision doesn't have any, doesn't have a lot of teeth. You know, no one is obligated to follow their recommendations. The mayor can override them. The council can override them. And, and yet they put an enormous amount of effort and thought in, into it.
So how, how have they dealt with that?
I think it's somewhat, I think what they do is somewhat undervalued.
I was just, that, that, I, I don't know anything about how that works. And I know you know, how much time we spend reading all of the papers and looking at all of the stuff. And I just was, you know, kind of like overwhelmed to think about what it would be like to do the budget for the city of Norwalk. I can barely read about it in the newspaper.
Well, it's not the operating budget, it's the capital budget.
Yeah, I, I don't know the lingo, so.
So, yeah, just to clarify a couple of things. So, yeah, to Louis's last points, the capital budget is like the big. budget is like the big infrastructure projects, new schools, um, that's different than the operating budget, which looks at all the departmental budgets on how much they use for salary, how many pencils we buy, fuel consumed, those kind of things. Um, one thing that, uh, Mr. Livingston has proposed, which I think makes sense, is that the capital, um, the capital budget process for the planning commission focuses on, uh, whether the, the requests made by the individual departments are consistent with the citywide plan. Very similar to what they do for what's called an eight twenty-four referral. So like, say, the, uh, the police department wants a new, uh, police boat. They, they need to say, well, we want to do this because of X, Y, and Z, and we feel it's consistent with this provision of the citywide plan. And that's usually the, like, the, the planning's commission's role and that kind of thing. And then the, the planning commission says, okay, that makes sense, check, and then writes a report to the, uh, so the one thing we were talking about is that that gets handled by, perhaps gets handled for the most part by a subcommittee of the, uh, of the combined commission. So not everybody has to participate. So it could be kind of a voluntary thing.
Sorry, Steve, how is the, the new, the new combined commission, is, is anything changing on how the budget process is going to work?
It's proposed to, because right now the planning commission prepares a separate budget. So what the, the idea would be that as opposed to necessarily preparing a full budget, full capital budget, they're going to review the requests that the departments make and, and make a finding of whether they feel they're consistent with the citywide plan or not. And that happens already now, but that, that would kind of reduce their workload of having to actually prepare a, a, a monetary budget based on, uh, you know, the, all the requests that come in.
So have a little bit more actionable, uh, aspect to it.
Yes, less for, a little less redundancy too, because what you'll see is they, they go through the capital budget. And for example, the Cranberry School, they had voted to approve that under the capital budget. And then, you know, this year, a couple of weeks ago, they had to relook at it again as an eight twenty-four referral, so they had to, you know, look at the same thing twice.
And I presume, uh, that, um, the, the commission does not wish to, uh, as a commission, uh, comment, uh, at this public hearing, which is perfectly fine. Uh, I just encourage you to take another look at the language that Steve said, uh, sent out to e- each of us.
Have something in mind, Lou?
No, uh, I have nothing, nothing. I, in fact, I don't, uh, at the moment, I don't intend to uh, comment at the public hearing. I may, I may monitor it, uh, but, but beyond that, no, uh, I don't. You know, this is, this is not our decision. This is, uh, this is a common council and the mayor. Um, it's their purview. Um, and I don't want to get entangled in that, and I don't necessarily want us to get entangled, uh, in that unless um, there is, uh, some, if there is a place where we think they've gone wrong. And, uh, it, it's, it's going to be a burden for us, um, or a burden for the city in some way that, that, uh, they've missed. Uh, but frankly, to date, I don't see that.
Yeah, I take it sort of a fatalistic view, that what will happen is going to happen, and then we'll see what, what turns out. What turns out. You know, I don't feel like I've I guess I agree with you, Lou, is what I'm saying. You know, it's not up to us. We're just here to do whatever it is they decide if we want to.
Right. Okay, um, then we'll, we'll, uh, leave it there. Steve, uh, when they set the date, would, um, you just notify us?
Sure.
Okay. Um. Discussion of moratorium on self-storage and distribution centers uses in the industrial zone.
Sure, so this kind of, um, kind of a twofold thing. Um, we did get, I, I, I don't, can't recall if this got passed on to the commissioner, and I believe it did, was, um, there was concerns about, uh, related to Norton Place and the distribution center, and, you know, how come we have not applied a moratorium to, I believe it was the, all the special permit uses in the restricted industrial zone. Um, there were some staff back and forth with, um, Miss Cici and, uh, others on that email. Um, you know, not all the special permit uses are necessarily bad. Some of them are probably just completely outdated at this point, based on uses I don't think are, will happen. But the one area I think where there was concern, you, you know, even expressed by, by the commission, was about distribution centers and the impacts and how those, uh, come forth. And just another one, it's kind of a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, which I, I just don't think it's a very good land use. Um, unless it's in a, in an area where it's, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but is the, uh, and, and we're seeing a lot of kind of, I don't know, proliferation's not the word, right word, but a lot of interest in self-storage facilities in the industrial zone, one zone. Uh, there was a prop, project you guys approved on Wilson Avenue, which was one of the Grasso properties that they sold off, that big, big mound of dirt right on the road, that got developed for kind of like a, like a flex warehouse kind of space. Ultimately, the, uh, developer sold it to a self-storage provider, so that's going to go in there. About two weeks after that kind of deal started to go through, uh, working, uh, you know, with Sabrina Church and Economic Development, they had, uh, a potential user that was going to bring about a hundred jobs into the city. Um, and they really liked the space, but it was too late because the deal was kind of done. Um, so I, I just, to me, I just don't think uh, self-storage is a good use of land. The industrial zone studies initial recommendations agrees and says it's just kind of in certain spots, it makes sense, but just as an overall land use, it's not the best use of land. So I was thinking it might not be a bad idea to extend the moratorium we put on the contractor yards to look at self-storage in, in the I-one zone, and then uh, distribution centers as well in the R-I zone. Um, and I put some draft language together, which pretty much mirrors what you approved for the contractor yards. And if you guys think that's a good idea, we could kickstart the process on moving that through to public hearing and going from there. But that's kind of where the, the gist of it and wanted to, um, get some feedback from you guys.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. What's driving the demand for self-storage? Is it all the itty-bitty tiny apartments?
You know, it, it very well could be. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I think that there's abilities for some time for these developments to build that into their modeling a little bit better. And, and I'm not saying it doesn't have to be eliminated from the city, but it's just where should we put it and how should we regulate it? Like, the one that you guys approved on, um, Willard Road, that one wasn't so bad because it was kind of back behind, wasn't out front and center on the street and like the prominent feature you see and was part of a larger development. And also was on a site that was, you know, a former, um, basically was a contractor's yard. So it's not like it took a valuable piece of land up while we're seeing demand for other kind of flex warehouse space, which might be a better use of land for the city, uh, from an economic standpoint.
Like there's a Westies, uh, self-storage across from the Sierra Grill and the, you know, off the post road, and that is pretty inoffensive.
Yeah, the, the aesthetics have improved quite a bit from, you know, the original, original self-storage, which were just kind of cargo box kind of layout and design, very cheap, that, you know, that they have made strides to make them a lot more attractive aesthetically, but I'm just more concerned about the use of land. They really don't, you know, for the amount of space they take up, you get one or two employees there. And so you, you could say, all right, that's good because I don't generate much traffic. But I don't know if that's really, you know, long-term in our best, best interest.
I see.
What action are you looking, uh, for on our part, Steve?
Um, if, if you're okay, then we can move some language forward for the referral process. I can pull it up on the screen if you want to preview it at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so the, the existing language, um, and this is in the I-one zone. Go up, see, that's in the I-one zone. So I just crossed out here, um, storage facilities, and then added those back in down below in number, in letter C. Which is the same, pretty much the same language we used as part of the contractor yards. And I just kind of substituted self-storage for that. And I put the date, um, the dates, uh, completion date should match up with the completion date for the, um, excuse me, for the contractor yard extension that we applied a couple of months back.
Uh, Steve, uh, is it impermissible uh, under the exclusions to make it effective with its approval? Or is that your intention anyway?
It's pretty, I, I think by the time we get through the referral process, it's going to be your first August meeting.
Okay.
I don't, because you, you'll, you meet July twenty-first, and that's not enough time for us to start the process.
Right.
And then the other part of it, um, was the R-I. And then this, I have one question for you guys. So I put, it all just affects his distribution facilities, and I can go through the other uses if you had any concerns about them, but, um, the one area I had clause was applications for expansion of, of an existing distribution facility. So I, since I, I was kind of thinking this is a little bit different because if there's already a distribution facility there, it's already been kind of vetted and worked through the system. There really aren't any self-storage facilities I think would be expanding, but I can take that sentence and yellow out if you would prefer, or we want to keep it in, just thought I would flag it for you.
I'd leave it in.
Okay.
Just a year.
Hmm. Tim's right, given everything going on.
Where is the, I'm sorry, it says warehouses and wholesale distribution. But I see, um, some of them miss something, the self-storage part. Where is that in this?
Uh, that's not, actually not an allowed use in this zone.
Okay.
But that's just in the I-one.
Okay, that, I figured that was why. I just wanted to just say. Um. Impact. Has anyone, um, has anyone spoken the other way? I mean, obviously, we're saying that there are concerns from residents regarding the, the impact of distribution facilities. I'm wondering if someone has said the other, said the opposite.
About this.
Either use or. Idea, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure somebody that's looking to develop the self-storage would definitely.
Yeah.
So, and, and they do have an opportunity, obviously, uh, as well as anybody else at the public hearing phase to to chime in and indicate why, um, that could go forward.
Right. Uh, is everyone, uh, comfortable with moving, uh, moving this forward? Okay.
Yes.
Steve, do we need to take official action?
Not, not at this point, no.
Everybody seems to agree.
Yeah.
All right. Um. I, uh, would, uh, like a motion to approve the, um, minutes of the June third meeting.
So moved.
Josh, Josh moves, there a second?
I'll second it.
Richard, oh, Ri- Richard seconds. Uh, any discussion of the minutes? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mi- Michael, was your hand up?
I think he's frozen.
Frozen.
Yeah, I think so. All right. Let's. Yeah, now, now he's, oh, there he is. Michael, you back? Do you, do you approve of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Connection's bad.
Um. Comments of directors, I have a quick question for Steve. Um, we've received invitations to, um, uh, the, um, opening of, uh, the new apartments on Water Street. Uh, do we need to have a, uh, be represented there?
Since that was this morning, um, no, no need to take any further action. I, I went, I went today, I, I was down.
That's fine, that's fine. I not, not, not looking to attend these things if it's not necessary.
Steve, you smiled well for the camera.
Yes, exactly. Former, former chairman, uh, Sumter very much liked to attend these events, so I
Yeah.
I always wanted to try to point that out.
Okay, um, comments of, uh, the director?
I had nothing further. Brian wanted to go over a memo from the planning commission about the accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, I'll pull this memo up. Uh, so this was made at their last meeting. Um, that they had recommended based on the housing bill that had just passed.
Right.
On the planning commission voted in favor to send this letter to you and encouraging, I guess, Steve and myself and the planning staff to, um, begin writing up some language for the accessory dwelling units. Um. And that's pretty much the gist of that.
Brian, what is the difference between, um, uh, this language and, uh, the existing regulation?
So the, the biggest difference is that they're allowed in detached structures. Um, and then, uh, currently, we, they have to be integral with the single-family house. Um, and then the other big thing is that they have to be, per the, the statute, um, allowed on any lot that can have a single-family house. So if you have a single-family house on any lot in the city, you'd be able to have an accessory dwelling unit. Other than that, they put some size restrictions on there. Um, and then, um, just we need more clarification on whether, you know, setbacks of a principal dwelling would apply to accessory dwelling units, or if we could, you know, put our own setbacks on it.
Comments?
Seems to make sense.
I, I have mixed feelings about, um, um, uh, uh, allowing, uh, freestanding, uh, buildings. Um, I don't want to discourage um, a, a, accessory, uh, apartment. Um, but I also don't want to see a proliferation of, um, new, new buildings on, um, um, existing, uh, s- single-family properties. What's the staff feeling on this?
I think Steve has stronger feelings than I do.
I'd, I don't know if I have strong feelings one way or the other. I think, um, I think that item, you know, I think one thing you could do similar to what I suggested with, um, East Norwalk TOD regulations is maybe hold a joint hearing with the planning commission. You know, the, I don't think we're, that there's, it has to happen today. Um, maybe, you know, we, we, we could easily draft, um, regulations that were consistent with what the, the new statutory language is and put up on a screen to show here, here's what you could do today with our regulations here, what the, here's what the new regulations would allow, and then see what people think and, and you know, take the feedback for everyone and go from there.
Steve, I'd also like to know what, uh, other communities are doing, not, not, not necessarily the surrounding communities. But, uh, you know, what is Stanford doing? What is, what is Danbury doing? Um, you know, what are, um, other, other, um, um, cities that have somewhat comparable demographics to ours, what they are. What they are, what, what they are doing? Do we know that?
I don't think we know that yet. Mike, you know, this legislation is, is it even, I don't even think it's a month old at this point. So I don't know if anybody's even gotten to that stage. Brian, when is the date, the, um, when you, when you have to act? When it, what's, what's the trigger?
Uh, it's, I don't think it's until January of 2023. I think you have a year.
Twenty-three, two, year and a half, wow.
Okay, so there, there's no rush on this?
No, and, and you know what? You maybe, maybe you wait till there's a, see what the council does with the, at the ordinance committee level with the combining commissions, and maybe that's a good task for a combined commission to take up if we have time. I mean, if you, you know, we can always reevaluate it in, uh, because I, I don't think any towns are going to take, have any kind of definitive path forward right now, if that's something that you want to see. So we could look at this again in a, maybe in August or something.
Okay, I, I, I'd like us to approach it in a, in a thoughtful way.
We want to get a handle of how often people are doing it versus in freestanding buildings? Or if both these are going to mostly present themselves as basically in-law suites? Which is what I thought was the main purpose of, you know, this legislation was to give people the ability to build those kind of, not a whole new building, but essentially, you know, essentially, I mean, I, I don't exactly know what, the ADU is the formal name for an in-law suite, but that's what it is.
Yeah, but you know, I, there are all kinds of ways you could have an accessory.
Oh, for sure, but I just don't know which way is the way it's going to primarily present itself.
Right.
Yeah, but I, and I think they're really a good thing. I, I'm very much in favor of accessory develop, dwelling units.
Well, dwelling, yeah. I mean, like, look, I can understand if someone has like an outside, you know, like, uh, an extended garage. It's almost a built-in accessory dwelling unit on top of it. You know, but I think for the most part, it's going to be like a basement with a separate door and a kitchen unit in there. Right, that's, that's definitely, um, from a construction standpoint, that's definitely cheaper than building a freestanding building.
Sure.
Um, you know, where I think, you know, if you're concerned about like an aesthetic or aesthetic concern or impact to like the development pattern of a, a neighborhood, if you had a proliferation of accessory, detached accessory units, it definitely changes the feel of the area a little bit.
You can put a tiny home on your front lawn effectively, the way that this is written, if the detach, right? Like there's nothing stopping you if you accept it at its face value, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Outside of like the setback, uh, requirements and those kind of things, so that, that's something else to think about. Our regulations right now are pretty liberal on ADUs within buildings, so that, that part, you know, they, they, they increase the minimum square footage based on what we had, but some of those things would be imperceptible to anybody if they had one now versus what we're proposing.
And the only way we could opt out is, is that would be the common council voting to opt out of, but out of the state's language, correct?
Correct.
So the order would be more either zoning or the combined, or, uh, the combined, uh, commission saying either we're going to accept it or propose to the common council to not accept it, correct? And then-
Yeah, I would think that they would look to you guys first for, you know, a recommendation. To that, to me, that makes the most sense.
Well, if, if we have these accessory dwelling units, you, we could have regulations that impact, you know, a separate building on your, on your property, you know, so that you can't put a tiny house in the front yard, which people might find disturbing in the neighborhood, but you can put an apartment above your garage. Or like Bob Duff did, he had a garage and then a house, he put a breezeway, an apartment up above and a staircase down into the, you know, family room of his house. He, his mother-in-law lived there for a number of years, and when she passed away, it's now a, I, someone else is living there, but I think it's rented. You know, I don't see, I see that as a good thing. It's providing a an inexpensive place to live for someone who needs it. But anyway.
All right. Health Department involved in this in terms of approving septics and that kind of thing, if it's in a septic area of the city?
Yeah, there, there is some legislative language that went along with that. I think the, you know, for the base, for the most part, the health department, if you have a septic system, they look at the number of bedrooms on the property. So that would still be regulated the same way.
All right, so we'll slowly move it along, um, and have some continuing conversations on this. Um, let's, let's first get, uh, a little bit of research done. Um, maybe then just take a look at what, um, comparable, so, so-called comparable cities have in terms of their current accessory, um, uh, apartment regulations.
Yeah, we did, uh, we did that research already for the most part. We'll, Brian and I'll take another look at that, and then we'll send that out.
Okay, that sounds good. Anything else on this?
Nope.
All right, if not, uh, comments of commissioners?
Steve, I really appreciated the, um, memo that you sent around about rentals versus condos.
Yeah, we're, we're actually, that was actually a good idea, has turned into a, thanks to Mr. Rowena, is now turning into a bad idea because we're doing a big research project now where we're going to pull all the, uh, we pulled three properties. Now we're looking at the, uh, pre-development tax, taxes paid, post-development taxes paid, pre-development, uh, school enrollment, post-development school enrollment, um, neighboring property values, how that impacted city services in terms of employment base, uh, number of employees in all the different departments. So we're, probably over the next few months, we're going to put all that together.
Good. Um, that, that sounds like, uh, uh, might be, become an important document for the city.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, um, it's going to take a little bit of time because we're trying to put that in with everybody else's workload, so we're, it'll take a few months, I think.
Right.
Important document for the city, and I think important for, um, some of the people that speak at the hearings against uh, projects based on it's doing nothing for the tax base and filling the schools and drinking the water, et cetera. I, I think this is terrific.
Yeah, those are, yeah, those are, we're actually gonna, we've got the water consumption data already below, but we'll have WPCA numbers, and we're going to put all that together.
Good. And, you know, we might, we might combine that with some information that the redevelopment agency, uh, has, uh, as well um, about some of the, uh, economic value of development, uh, within a community. Uh, anything else, um, before we say goodnight to one another and goodbye to Rod?
Any party words from Rod?
I would like to personally say goodbye to Rod. I wish I got to know you better, but I enjoyed working with you on the commission.
I totally agree.
Take care, Rod.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for your kind words, and I enjoyed working with all of you. I think you're a very thoughtful and collegial bunch, and good luck with P and Z.
Thanks, Rod. Take care.
All right, take care.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Uh, Richard made a motion, is there a second? Michael seconded. All those in favor?
All right.
Enjoy a bit of a vacation, um, because our meeting isn't, uh, until late July. See you all then.